The motion for the question on Article 11, 192, 25, 11. The main motion under Article 22, 218, 5, 4. Article 12, motion for the question, 162, 44, 9. Article 12, the advisory committee amendment, 101, 19, 9. Article 12, main motion, 216, 6, 7. And finally, the Article 13, main motion, 211, 3, 13. Before we, the special within the special, which we'll refer to from time to time as STM 2, contains a single motion. It is found on, the first portion of it is found on page 1-4 over to the top of 1-5. It's in the select board report, but this is in fact the advisory committee motion. It's just that their version of it and one of the supplements omitted the preface. So we're using the motion on page 1-4 as the first portion of the motion under this article. It's moved by Mr. Sandman, seconded by Ms. Hamilton. There is a motion offered by the advisory committee on supplement number four, page one, relates to the reserve fund transfer to fund an indemnification payment to Stanley Spiegel, about which you've all heard a good deal. The, that motion will be treated as an amendment, so it will be voted on separately from the main motion. And it's moved by Mr. Sandman and seconded by Ms. Banka. Before we go any further, I want to disclose a, the appearance of a conflict in my moderating this article. The, in June of 2018, when I was the town moderator, I sent a letter to the select board supporting the town's indemnification of Mr. Spiegel. This has been published in the combined reports under Article 30. At the time I did this, of course, I had no idea that that issue would ever come before a town meeting. Well, lo and behold. And since that time, I've taken no actions in support of Mr. Spiegel's position. If I were the town moderator, I would probably recuse myself on the basis of having submitted that letter, recuse myself from this debate. I'm not refusing myself. And the reasons are essentially as follows. The, I believe that there is a some difference between the standards that the moderator needs to apply to conflicts and the standards that an assistant moderator can apply. But that's a fairly weak read. Of more importance is the fact that I have no pecuniary interest in this matter whatsoever. I have no personal interest except a long-term friendship with Stanley Spiegel, which I share with a great number of the members of the advisory committee and town meeting members who have worked with Mr. Spiegel over the years. Another reason is the need for a highly experienced moderator to moderate this particular debate, which promises to be possibly somewhat rancorous. And I certainly have that experience, and I stand on that experience in taking the position that I believe that I can debate, can moderate this debate fairly to both sides, and I will proceed to do so. You may disagree with the position I've taken, but I have taken it and will proceed to moderate this debate. I will not allow points of order concerning my capacity or authority or the propriety of my moderating this debate. So those of you who are poised to make points of order in that area, please withhold your fire. So we proceed now to the debate on these articles, and I call first on Mr. Sandman, who will have eight minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Sandman, Town Meeting Member, precinct three, and advisory committee chair, speaking for the advisory committee. We adjust the budget each November in response to changes in net revenue. We now expect to receive $1,987,658 more in net revenue than was forecast in May, just under $2 million. Increases the split between the town's budget and the schools. The nominal split used to be 50-50, adjusted by some rather arcane factors, and it usually ended up being about 60% to the schools, 40% to the town, which is very close to the actual split in overall spending. This year, recognizing that reality, the town-school partnership formula was changed to simply 60-40, schools-town. And so $1,196,701 will go to the schools. $791,587 will be added to the town's collective bargaining reserve, which is a reserve that can be used to absorb the impact of future collective bargaining agreements. There's one external transfer that doesn't actually affect the budget, but it is a transfer of $200,000 from the fund that Town Meeting set up for racial equity using proceeds from the marijuana community impact fee. That money will be contributed to the racial equity fund managed by the Brookline Community Foundation. A committee of three Brookline Community Foundation board members, three town representatives, and six representatives from disadvantaged communities will assess how to use the funds. There are two internal transfers in the budget. An internal transfer moves money from one account to another. It's like moving it from one pocket to another. I'm using the present tense to describe these transfers, but neither one is final until you vote on the budget, including the amendment. First, $99,855 has been added to the DPW's budget to assess municipal roads, bridges, and other transportation infrastructure. To cover that amount, $81,754 is being transferred from the TNC Reserve, the money we accumulate from Uber and Lyft fees. $18,101 is being transferred from the unspent 2019 Police Department TNC Reserve. Uber and Lyft fees must be spent on transportation-related issues. By voting for the budget article, you will be allocating the almost $2 million reserve, the almost $2 million revenue increase between the schools and the town, 60-40, voting to make a $100,000, more or less, dollar transfer internally to the DPW from one account to another, and authorizing a transfer of $200,000, an external transfer to the Brookline Community Foundation to start funding the racial equity commitment Town Meeting has made. Second, and I recognize more controversially, the advisory committee added a $198,050 reduction in the budget line for the reserve fund it manages. And those funds, and I have a slide, Mr. Moderator, that I appreciate if the IT folks could pop up.
Well, before you show your slide, Mr. Sandman, and with apologies for the necessity to interrupt, I have a point of order by Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Rosenthal, what is your point of order?
Oh, actually, I said I could wait till after Michael. It's unrelated to Michael's speech, if you wish.
All right, that's fine, and I'll take your point of order at that time.
Okay. Second, the advisory committee added a $198,050 reduction in the budget line for the reserve fund managers, the managers, and you can see that up on the screen. And it's a red line because we passed it on November 2nd. And then, as you'll hear, last night, we made some changes that we believe add to its effectiveness. The funds from that reduction in the budget line for the reserve fund will go into the claims and settlements account of Town Council's office. It does not authorize paying out anything. It recognizes the potential obligation of the town to indemnify Stanley Spiegel for legal expenses subject to an independent review of the fees. More about that indemnity claim in just a minute. At the advisory committee's meeting last night, we added the language in red requiring that the independent review will be followed by a report to the advisory committee as well as to the select board, and that the advisory committee is required to hold a public hearing on the report with a week's notice to all of you. Nothing, and the rest of the public too, for that matter. Nothing in the amendment, nothing in the amendment, requires Mr. Spiegel's attorney to provide confidential billing information or any other confidential information to anyone except the reviewer, who will be appointed jointly by Town Council and by Mr. Spiegel's attorney. The red line shows differences from our November 2nd version. I know it's not usual to mention authors, but in this case, you should know that Town Meeting Member Nicole McClelland, Carla Banka, and I work closely with each other to craft the changes you see in the red line. Unfortunately, there was one change that was reversed by the moderator. We voted to delete the word "or" in the last phrase and substitute the word "and." That change has been ruled out of scope. Now, my linguistic acumen was called into question last night around the word "all," but I do know that "or" and "and" are not interchangeable. "Or" allows the select board to come to an agreement with Mr. Spiegel, even without the review the advisory committee requires. But the select board chair promises not to do that, as she will say tonight. We expect that the process prescribed, prescribed in the amendment, will go forward. So the practical impact, the practical impact, I'll say that again, the practical impact of "or" versus "and" is zero. And we don't need to go to war over it, no matter which side of the political aisle we're on. We'll all get the report and the transparency we seek. Some background regarding the indemnity claim. Stanley Spiegel was a member of the advisory committee, and he was and is a town meeting member. He said something, we don't know exactly what, in a conversation in Town Hall that triggered Mr. Austin's attorney to include him as a defendant in Mr. Austin's suit against the town. It's clear from court documents that he was included because he was a town meeting member and an advisory committee member. The court dismissed the claim against Stanley. When Mr. Austin's attorneys tried to bring him back in, the federal magistrate ordered the attorney to pay Stanley $20,000 for frivolously including him in the suit. That penalty has not been paid. All town volunteers, town meeting members, zoning board members, members of the Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, all volunteers could be sued as a result of their actions on behalf of the town. State law provides for indemnification to municipal, quote, "employees," unquote, who are sued for something they did in their official capacity. Stanley's attorney says that case law has been broadened to include town officials who are volunteers, and that Brookline should therefore indemnize Stanley for his legal fees. Assuming that the town is obligated to indemnify, the advisory committee wants assurance the fees we're paying are reasonable. Dick Banka and Mark Levy posted detailed emails on the listserv, TMMA listserv, describing the safeguards in the amendment, but briefly, we require an independent review of the fees Stanley paid. It's not that we doubt how much he's paid. We want to know whether the number of hours spent was reasonable, given the nature of the work that was done. We also want verification from Town Council that we're obligated to indemnifying. If you vote for the amendment, you'll be voting to require a settlement agreement releasing the town from any further obligation to Stanley as a condition of paying whatever amount is agreed. You'll be voting to set aside enough money to pay up to 100% of the indemnity claim, but without obligating the town to make any payments, pending an independent review. The select board chair has agreed to wait until after a public hearing hosted by the advisory committee before she brings this to the select board. By a vote of 13 to 1 with eight abstentions, the advisory committee recommends favorable action on Article 1, including the budget as amended. To close, I'm reminded of the title line from a 1969 Beatles anti-war song. All I'm saying is give peace a chance. Let's move this process forward by passing both the budget, which is not controversial, and the amendment. Please give peace a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Heather Hamilton for a majority select board. Every year, the town must forecast revenues to form the current year's budget. In November, we have an opportunity to test our assumptions before we have to make our final declaration to set our tax rate. And as you just heard from Michael Salmon, our revenues are stronger than we expected, and we have money to divide between the town and schools to the tune of nearly $2 million. In accordance with the town-school partnership, we typically split at roughly 60-40, with 40% going to town services. And we have allocated roughly $100,000 to DPW and the remainder to the collective bargaining reserve, where we hope to finally reach agreements with our unions. In addition, we are meeting our commitments to use marijuana mitigation money for the purposes of racial equity. This is an important value for this board and the town, and we are happy we have the resources to do this. Finally, as you are aware, the AC's budget amendment has an additional transfer from the reserve fund to indemnify Stanley Spiegel, subject to an independent review of the fees. While that motion allows the select board to pay the funds without a third-party review, this board will not do that. Let me also address a few questions posed on the TMMA listserv. There was a question raised about why the board has not chosen There was a question raised about why the board has not chosen to indemnify Stanley Spiegel and when those decisions were made. A lot of this is covered under executive session, and some of this precedes my time on the board. With that in mind, it is my understanding that the board voted not to indemnify Mr. Spiegel in 2015, but that there were two abstentions. We have an entirely new board, and this board wanted to address the Gerald Alston litigation before addressing the question to indemnify Mr. Spiegel. It is also my understanding, though I was not on the board at the time, that the town did offer attorney services to Mr. Spiegel, and then he turned it down because he felt there was a conflict to be represented by the same counsel. I believe his counsel disputes this. For the questions regarding who has the authority to indemnify and legal issues around indemnity, I will refer to Town Council Jonathan Simpson to address this issue, should it come up in the Q and A. One of the biggest challenges the board has faced regarding the issue is verification and reasonableness of the charges. I believe a third party will help us to get closer to a resolution on this matter. In a vote of three to two, this select board urges favorable action on the AC's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. We'll take your point of order now.
Yes, thank you. It's actually pretty simple. I'm not going to ask about the amendment deadlines and so forth. I've thrown in the towel on that, but the question is, as you know, Mr. Moderator, I've tried to reorder the order of speakers as per the handbook, and if I put in the proposed order that they've all agreed to, that I know, the people I know of, would you attempt to adhere to that order? The problem is that I've got, it was all white males who came in first, and that goes against what we're trying to do here.
Well, Mr. Rosenthal, as you might appreciate, in the last two days,
I do.
when I received the news one day at a time that I was going to have to moderate the entire evening, I have not had time to attend to everybody's wishes, and yours has been, has fallen by the wayside, and I apologize for that, but I think you'll find that the order in which the proponents will speak to this motion and this issue will be to your, substantially as you've requested.
May I just put it in the chat, Mr. Moderator? If you want to ignore it, fine.
I can't do anything about it from the podium right now, Mr. Rosenthal.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not going to try. With that, Mr. Rosenthal, you're on for eight minutes. And I won't count your point of order toward that time.
Or your response, I assume? May I get the first slide, please?
Yeah, tell us who you are, please.
Yes, I'm Marty Rosenthal, lifelong precinct niner, and very proud to be Stanley's lawyer. And I admit that I have a bit of an interest to that extent, I guess a bit is the right word. And the interest includes the $29,000 possible contingency fee for the indemnity, which ironically is far less than I'm owed or would get in court. After a six-year history, and I'm sorry, a little bit of lost stuff, I'll address some recent questions, but not all those that have been thrown on the clear-cut wall that is in front of us. Ultimately, there are two questions. Do we follow the law, and what kind of community are we? December 1st, 2015 came a 55-page complaint, 177 paragraphs. This is the one identifying Stanley, as you will see, and something that's never been disputed as a twofold official. It does exaggerate the role of the advisory committee in settlements, but we'll put that aside. Three paragraphs alleged his conduct, two of them very trivial. Only the third was recently pressed in Alston's appeal, a maybe two-minute 2014 Town Hall conversation, maybe two sentences, with another town meeting member and a local activist. The alleged details are and forever will be disputed, like that he'd seen Alston's personnel file. But for tonight and for six long years, they don't matter, nor, if you wrongly heard, that he said something stupid. Five judges ruled that if every allegation were true, there's no case, and it's legally frivolous. And, by the way, far more stupid things have been indemnified. Next slide, please. Stanley called several lawyers. His need for separate counsel was a no-brainer. Conspiracy cases are classic cases where there's often finger-pointing and distancing among the defendants, ergo, conflict of interest. That's clear for municipal civil rights charges in opinion 86-2 of the Mass Power Association's Ethics Committee, which I happen to have been on since then, 1997. Next slide, please. In fact, aside from our disgust at Pender's promotion, in 2014, Stanley and I criticized the board for giving two-week status to the Diversity Commission and the Diversity Office. Town meeting agreed with us and passed the amendment that's up on the screen. Next slide, please. Stanley chose me and this all-kind firm whose space I share at reduced rates. After two frenzied weeks, like debriefing, seeking umbrella coverage, and failing, by the way, we went to the board for discretionary bylaw indemnity, unaware that our voters had accepted 25813 mandatory indemnity. Here's from the minutes, two to one to two, denying it, due supposedly to Stanley not acting as a town official at the time. Having trouble, oh yeah, getting rid of the, all right, next. Where was I? I'm sorry. I lost my place because the screen overwhelmed my speech. Next slide, please. Only there did we learn, I think this, yeah, this is it. Only that I learned in that meeting that Brookline had accepted 25813. Later, I saw its very broad definition for official, paid or unpaid. The board vote was basically Town Council's stance until last April that his alleged conduct was not, quote, "within the scope of his duties or employment" as an advisory committee or town meeting member. Case law emphasizes mostly that latter word, "employment." Ironically, three paid officials, counting Town Council, who were all sued, all indemnified, and none vindicated like him, blocked his indemnity. I soon read all six Chapter 258 scope cases, all broadly interpreting that word to, quote, "encourage public service and prevent officials from viewing their duties in a restrictive manner," including a defamation case and a corp for false arrest. Next slide, please. Soon I got the two-to-one margin of the 1980 vote. It's up on the screen. In January, and here's the full story that Heather got slightly wrong, Town Council floated an idea of hiring the town's outside law firm, but unlike all the others, at Stanley's own expense, which would have flouted both indemnity law and the conflict of interest. So we obviously turned it down. Next slide, please. The massive court case proceeded. Lots of filings and amended complaint with more plaintiffs than another one dropping them, et cetera. We glanced at many weekly filings, which by now are well over 500. Our first priority was dismissal, hoping for the board's minutes to return later for indemnity if we got a dismissal. Magistrate Kelly's late 2016 report recommended dismissal with prejudice. The judge later did it without prejudice and gave Mr. Ames another chance. For footnote one, added what you see up here. Ames's response confirmed that the dispute here is deeply personal. Then two more years, lots more work, sanctions briefs, and a hearing, eventually for a circuit hearings. Judge O'Toole had in 2018 finally dismissed it with prejudice, ordering $20,000 from Ames for sanctions, but frivolously suing Stanley. Those are in a court escrow account, and that's a long story. We're having trouble getting them released. And then, it's still three more years until it was over. So, next slide, please. In we tried indemnity again, submitting invoices, 2018, and we were only asking for $30,000 for the two inevitable appeals just to help Stanley out before he had to pay more fees. But we got basically an insulting, non-negotiable offer of $10,000, far less than the fees that were then paid, and zero for later. Next slide, please. It's been asked, do we need a bylaw? You can't read this because it's too much, but you don't have to. 2018, I gave the select board a draft bylaw for indemnity, but Stanley was then so debilitated, basically by the town abandonment of him, that I wasn't even allowed to talk to him, let alone go public with a bylaw or a lawsuit. Next slide.
You have one minute.
Thank you. After last spring's two appellate sanctions, I was about to get on the board's agenda, and Jocelyn finally came around to make Stanley whole. And she now submits, she supports one Article 30. We again submitted invoices, but by the summer, Jocelyn was out the door. Next slide, please. Some other things have been come up, like questions about the sanctions, about subtracting them and the contingency fee. If you look at supplement number two, our joint or of AC's motion, that explains those things. The sanctions were for deterrence. They were not, they were punitive, not compensatory. And please read the entire Judge Kelly decision, which explains that better. Next slide, please. So now the two big questions. Will you follow the law? And will your verdict, as that word means, speak the truth? That even a generous or even a narrow scope of town meeting and advisory employment obviously includes discussing town affairs. If not, well, no.
Please conclude, Mr. Rosenthal.
Don't do that yourself. We thank the boards for voting 16 to 5 to support it. May I just show the next slides and keep my mouth shut? Town organizational chart. Next.
Mr. Rosenthal, please conclude.
All right, so these are the obligations of Town Council, of town meeting members. May I just see the last slide and I'll and I'll say thank you all very much, especially the board, the advisory committee, and the Town Meeting Members Association. That's not the last slide. It's the quote from Hillow.
All right, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to hear from three speakers who were opposed to this indemnity. We'll start with Mr. Black. Each one of you will have three minutes. Ms. Brown will have four. Mr. Black?
Hello, am I audible?
Yes, you're fine.
All right, thank you. Hello, Ryan Black, Precinct 6. I am encouraging you all to vote no on this article, and I ask you to center two principles while making your decision, impartiality and good governance. To be very clear, ensuring indemnification for our electives generally, I agree is a good goal. However, this article does not set any sort of policy or procedure the town would follow in future instances, nor does it set good precedence. For instance, this article made its way to town meeting with little discussion along the way about how no billing statements have been provided. We are just supposed to take the petitioner's word that $198,000 is a proper amount. In this very case, a judge has ruled that Mr. Rosenthal billed for more work than was reasonable and at higher hourly rates than were reasonable. Also, there is language in this article that would permit the select board to approve indemnification with no review of invoices required. So while the article does mention a third-party review, that can be skipped with a vote of three select board members. Multiple people have tried to fix this language, but our moderators have thrown up obstacles at every turn. So let's be honest about the stakes here. Voting yes is not equal to taking any sort of stand on principle to protect the volunteers of our town government. A yes vote only means the rules or norms do not apply to Mr. Rosenthal. Now, I'm much newer to town meeting than many of you. I just ran for the first time this past May. I didn't grow up in Brookline. I only moved here as an adult. Accordingly, I do not have the histories many of you share with some of our colleagues. I've yet to form the years-long friendships many of you have with your fellow town meeting members. It's a sense of community I'm impressed by. So just as any new individual to an established group is likely to have a different perspective than its longstanding members, my reaction to this article is likely much different than for some of you. What I see is a town meeting member introducing legislation that, if passed, would pay that same town meeting member, Mr. Rosenthal, a $29,000 contingency fee. What I see is a well-connected town meeting member trading on decades of personal relationships and trust you might have in him in order to avoid a close audit. What I see is an attempt to circumvent the normal levels of scrutiny we owe our constituents. What I see is a financial conflict of interest. This will be very difficult to explain to my constituents if it passes. We have an opportunity to say this kind of favoritism and insiderism has no place in Brookline. We just need to vote no. And let's be clear, a no vote does not preclude a future article from being refiled to indemnify Mr. Spiegel, an article that does include a robust policy to protect all town meeting members and requires billing receipts be provided, and that requires a third-party review of said invoices. That would be precedent worth setting. To close, I implore you all to not fall for the fear mongering about how the volunteerism of our town government is at stake. For this article was never about protecting it in the first place. It never bothered to try and guard it. Its purpose was to play on those good intentions so as to avoid adequate scrutiny and accountability. Please vote no on this budget item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ananian.
Hello, Mr. Moderator. Could I just clarify, if you haven't already, the order of the votes, if I know how to make my recommendations on voting?
Sure. We will vote first on the amendment of the main motion, which is the Spiegel indemnification motion by the advisory committee. We will then vote on the main motion on page 1-4.
Thank you. And, Ms. Moderator, could I request an additional 30 seconds for my speech? I've been about a dozen seconds over. Thank you very much. My name is Scott Ananian. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 10. So let me start by sharing the disappointment and sadness this warrant article brings to me. To be clear, the lack of strong indemnification over the 317-year history of our town meeting has not apparently deterred your predecessors, any of you, or the dozens who volunteer for countless committees and commissions. But despite the rarity of this issue, I would, in fact, support the development of a town indemnification policy, one that would outline clearly who exactly is covered, what exactly is to be considered official business of the town, to what extent fees and damages would be covered, and what process would be used to evaluate and award them. My strong personal preference would be to bring back this matter to the next town meeting in connection with a comprehensive policy that could ensure that not only Mr. Spiegel gets indemnified an appropriate amount, but every future town meeting member who needs such protection for the town does as well. And if this item is voted down tonight, that is my intention. Given my fundamental alignment, I am so shocked and disappointed by the way this warrant article has been brought, seemingly calculated to increase division. This article was added to the warrant on a personal petition from Mr. Rosenthal to the select board without collecting the usual signatures a citizen article would require. This is not illegal, but it is unusual and not something you or I could do. If this motion passes, it bears a direct $29,000 financial benefit to the petitioner, who is also the lead defender of the motion tonight. Again, not illegal, but it is highly unusual, and I'd certainly not like to see it become routine or expected practice. Why? Why, given all the friends Mr. Rosenthal and Mr. Spiegel obviously have, who you may hear from tonight, was this not moved by a third party with obvious financial conflict? I was present when this article was presented to the select board. As a strong plea was made for the petitioner to take the time to properly collect signatures and bring the matter through the usual channels to a special town meeting. And from the start, it has been expressed that Mr. Spiegel's indemnification be part of a broader policy of protection for town meeting members. But Mr. Rosenthal expressed that there wasn't time to do this properly, a rush of his own making. A referral motion proposed in good faith to allow us to support indemnification as part of a comprehensive policy was rejected by the moderator. Amendments to the AC motion have been batted aside or rejected on procedural grounds. Attempts to strengthen oversight were deliberately undermined with the addition of the word "or" on the penultimate line of the motion. And when that was removed by the advisory committee, it was added back by the moderator. The issues with the requested amounts will be discussed by others, many parties, including not only Carla Banka on the advisory committee, who I thank, myself and Nicole McClelland, many others have improved the advisory committee motion as best as we are able. It is up to you to decide whether we are permitted to go far enough, because fundamentally, this motion does not provide any protection to town meeting members other than to Mr. Spiegel. Mr. Banka underlined this in an email to the Town Meeting Member Association list yesterday. It will not protect you. The petitioner has claimed that the town is legally obligated already to indemnify us, but he has been unsuccessful in making that same argument before courts and multiple select boards. It seems clear he is mistaken, and a bylaw or town policy is needed, or else this would have been done already, and we wouldn't be here today debating it. The way to bring the town together over this issue is to take the time to examine the issue of indemnification and bring forward a policy protecting all of us. Compensating Mr. Spiegel in a manner we are satisfied would apply to any of us equally. The attempts to bend the rules in favor of Mr. Rosenthal's motion undermine that essential equity. This article is being portrayed as a settlement, as a way to close up a festering wound so we can put a terrible chapter of our town's history behind us. But a festering wound does not heal if we cover it up. The infection festers. What has happened to Mr. Spiegel should never happen again. The way this article has been brought should never happen again. Vote in the way you believe best sends that message. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. You have four minutes.
Deborah Brown, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I support, you know, the Rosenthal bill, billing being referred to a third-party expert. I look at it through, as I, as I look at an 80-plus-year-old man who allegedly shot off his mouth and who has incurred approximately at least 150,000 in legal fees. And it begs the question, what do we do? And I don't know, I still don't know why the man wasn't indemnified. The interest, you know, you know, diverged, you know, you know, was he negligent, willful, or malicious? You know, what were the town's obligations to compensate him? I don't know that. And that still makes me queasy about this whole thing. But I want to ask all of us as town meeting members to consider our ethical obligations. Town meeting members, we're budget stewards. Each of us have an obligation to ensure that we use the town's finite public resources wisely and comply with the laws that govern the use of those, those resources. We also have a fiduciary responsibility of sorts. And what we can't be, we can't function like an old boys' club. We're legislators. And how is it that this town can trust town meeting to manage 330-plus million dollars? But all of a sudden, we're circumspect when it comes to $200,000? That's extremely problematic for me. I am also extremely upset at the self-dealing and nepotism that I see on the part of Marty and Stanley. There is no reason for them to be here today. And if you look at state law, it's, you know, this is, a municipal employee may not participate in any particular matter in which he or a member of his immediate family has a financial interest. They clearly have a financial interest. Even if you go to our own Town Meeting Handbook, page 22, you'll see language that says that they should accuse themselves, that they shouldn't be here. And so what did the federal courts actually have to say about the billing? If, there was a 17, 2019 decision, and basically it said about the billing, and I quote, "This case was over-litigated by Spiegel's lawyers." Another quote, "Since plaintiff's pleadings were repetitious, it was unwarranted for Spiegel's counsel repeatedly to file lengthy responses incorporating versions of the same arguments," end quote. Another quote, I didn't hear you?
One minute.
Okay. All right. A case could be made that the case was overstaffed. Another comment was, "Given his limited experience in civil right, in the civil rights realm, the fees requested by Attorney Rosenthal are excessive." Now, we gotta think about this, folks. We gotta think about this. And I'm going to conclude very quickly by saying, send the claims to a third-party expert for analyzing. Factor in what the federal court said about the billing that they received. We have to figure out how to make Stanley whole. We also have to make sure that volunteers have some confidence that the town will protect them. But I am adamant that counsel should not be enriched based on what the court has said about the way that this case was managed. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wyszynski.
Hi, everyone. Neil Wyszynski, Precinct Five, speaking for myself. Our form of government is reliant on volunteers willing to serve in key roles. Town meeting and the advisory committee are two such key roles. As you've heard, Mr. Spiegel was accused in the Alston federal lawsuit of enforcing the town's alleged discriminatory policies due to his membership in town meeting and the advisory committee. The only reason Mr. Spiegel was named as a defendant was the fact that he's a town meeting member and was a member of the advisory committee, no matter how misguided or frivolous that rationale may have been. In my mind, that qualifies for indemnification. No volunteer serving on any of these bodies, none of us should be in fear of losing our home, our retirement savings, or our children's college funds because we might take a stand on anything that might be unpopular or controversial. And until we become a city, we need volunteers to serve in key roles. Without volunteers, town government dies. Now, I take this personally, and so should every one of us. If you think this can't happen to you, think again. Think about it the next time you do or say anything that might be deemed controversial or unpopular. Think about the next time you speak up at a public meeting. Ask yourself, will I be sued because I'm a town meeting member? Or a member of the advisory committee? Or even a member of the Town Meeting Members Association? Does that sound absurd? Yeah, it does to me, but do you want to bet your house on it? I believe indemnification is the right thing to do to put all aspects of the Alston case behind us once and for all. Now, I don't know if 198,000 is the right number, and that's why the advisory committee motion calls for a third-party review prior to any payment. And we heard Chair Hamilton pledge to engage in an independent third-party reviewer, even though the select board doesn't have to under the motion. And I do wish Mr. Rosenthal wasn't the petitioner. And yes, it's highly unusual for the petitioner to have a financial interest in a warrant article they bring to town meeting. But the conflict was disclosed, and it doesn't change the fact that voting yes is the right, moral, and necessary vote to preserve our town volunteer-based government. And let me end with just a disclosure. I was one of the parties in the slide that Mr. Rosenthal displayed, who abstained back, way back in, I guess, 19, 2018, or whenever it was. I think personally, that was a mistake. I should have voted yes, and if I had it to do over again, I would have voted yes, and we wouldn't be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jonathan Klein, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. I'm relatively new to town meeting. I've actually never been to a physical town meeting. I've only been to Zoom town meetings. And so I was not around when many of these events happened. I find this whole thing. I also say I'm a retired lawyer. I find these things troublesome and, and difficult and painful. And I am sad that the, the town leaders have put us all in this position. You know, having said that, when I signed up, I initially intended to speak, you know, against the motion because I, after reviewing it and after reviewing the federal court decisions regarding the billing in this matter, and my concerns about the contingent fee, which I think is, is extraordinary and, and wrong, frankly. You know, I was planning to vote against this. I am now reluctantly in favor of the advisory committee's revised amendment, and I intend to support that. I appreciate the work the advisory committee, and especially Nicole McClellan, working with them, did in adding language that makes me feel better about the review that will happen. But I have to say that I find the, you know, anyone who reads the federal court decision and looks at the level of overbilling in this case that the federal court found, you know, has to be troubled by what's going on here. Anyone that sees that a member of this body is being paid a contingent fee to lobby this body to make a, you know, a certain decision has to be troubled here. I am extraordinarily troubled. And so with that, I, I will vote in favor of the advisory committee amendment. If it doesn't pass, I will vote against the main motion. And I urge the select board and the advisory committee in following through, assuming that the amendment passes, to carefully scrutinize the fees that are being requested here, and in particular, to come to the conclusion that a contingent fee to a member of this body to lobby this body to make a certain decision is just, on its face, wrong and inadmissible and should not be allowed. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Well, Mr. Klein, I want to call your attention to the fact that the main motion that you said you'd vote against is the budget adjustment motion on page one dash four and one dash five. Not sure you intended that. The advisory committee motion is an amendment, and it's a separate matter. Mr. Van Skoyak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, members of town meeting. Good evening. I'm John Van Skoyak, a member of the select board since 2020, and prior to that, a town meeting member for some 30 years, and for a brief period, a member and chair of the advisory committee. In those capacities, I've been known to speak my mind, and often and occasionally, too much at length. In all that time, I have never had to fear reprisal for exercising my freedom of speech. Never, that is, until one of my town meeting advisory committee colleagues was targeted in a lawsuit, putting him at financial risk and doing serious harm to his peace of mind, not to mention that of his family, all because of an opinion he expressed on a matter on the agenda for deliberation and action by officials of the town. I agree with town meeting members who have asked questions, good ones, about the town's legal obligations and the financial claim inherent in Article One. I too will not be satisfied and will not join in a select board vote until expenses incurred during Stanley Spiegel's defense of his freedom of speech have been subjected to independent review. That said, whatever is the result of the review, I support indemnification of Stanley Spiegel by the town. That's because I firmly believe no town meeting member should be subjected to what Stanley has endured as a result of the frivolous claim brought against him. The threat to Stanley Spiegel's freedom of speech was real and could have done lasting harm. It required vigorous legal defense, regardless of the costly hours that had to be invested as the case worked its way through the legal process. The fine imposed by the judge against the attorney who brought the claim against our colleague sent a message loud and clear. Hopefully, it will serve as a warning to those who would attempt to intimidate and suppress outspoken town meeting members in the future.
One minute.
Brookline is indebted to Stanley for standing up for his rights. We are equally indebted to his attorney for defending those rights energetically, doggedly, and through every twist and turn of the legal process. Freedom of speech is priceless. A half-hearted or halfway defense is no defense at all. Article One is about protecting our fragile town meeting democracy, which has stood the test of time, but will die if we allow threats of legal retaliation to suffocate our freedom to debate facts and express opinions. Please vote yes on Article One and sleep better tonight, knowing that you stood up for your rights and for self-government free of fear. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Conquest.
Can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, yep.
Arthur, excuse me, Arthur Wellington Conquest, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. I just want to make it very clear that I'm not a lawyer, and I don't have, and don't want to give the impression that I know anything about the intricacies of this case. But I do ask that we support the advisory committee or Mr. Sandman's recommendation that this get turned over to a third party and have them investigate this case thoroughly. Like Mrs. Brown, I read the decision that was made by Magistrate Kelly. And everybody needs to get a hold of that document to hear what she had to say about the overbilling that was made in this case. And it's not just one small piece, but a number of them. And it really strikes me very frightening that someone would overbill in the manner that they did, like sitting in a diversity committee meeting and then billing for those services and phone calls and so on and so forth that were not related or minor related to the, to the case. Let's get this thing right. I'm not saying that people shouldn't be indemnified, and in particular, Stanley Spiegel. I'm just saying that if we're going to compensate for the decisions made by the court, let them be real. Let them be valid. And I would vote 100% for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr., Ms. McClellan. Yes.
Hi, Nicole McClellan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 11. I'm speaking tonight in favor of the advisory committee amendment because I believe what we have before us tonight is the option that of all possible outcomes, realistic outcomes, provides the most transparency and accountability for a process that could, by our own bylaws, end up woefully devoid of those critical pieces of good governance. To be clear, I do not believe that what we have before us is ideal or should ever be used as a model, but I firmly believe it's better than any of the alternatives. As Mike Sammon explained, this amendment allows for a third-party review of Mr. Rosenthal's legal fees. The alternative, if this doesn't pass, is that the law entirely allows for the select board to reassume these negotiations behind closed doors, with or without deep analysis, with or without public town meeting transparency, and to vote to authorize virtually whatever they wish. That said, I would be remiss not to address the path by which we got here. An oft-repeated refrain that was offered as a justification for supporting the original article that came to us without asking too many questions or requiring the provision of detailed records was that Mr. Rosenthal is known to many of the more tenured members of town meeting, that because he and Mr. Spiegel have been here for many years and are known, that we should go ahead with the article as originally presented without much further scrutiny or accountability. These are fine metrics to use in your personal life. I know this person and trust them, and I'm going to let this slide. But this is not, however, a healthy metric to use in government. In government, when an inner circle of people with power make exceptions to their rules and standards in deference to a request from a trusted friend, there's a different word for that. It's called cronyism, and Brookline is not immune. This is an approach that erodes trust in a larger system and engenders double standards that over time create unequal and unfair playing fields for individuals or groups who are not privileged to be known and trusted. This is not a best practice, it's a worse practice. And even if in the short term, those practices protect and benefit your particular interests, over time, the inevitable outcome is a weakened system pervaded by mistrust and polarized by the knowledge that insiders get to play by a different rulebook than outsiders. I appreciate very much that the advisory committee recognized that the article as originally petitioned and presented by Mr. Rosenthal relied heavily upon the expectation of this privileged treatment, and that several members responded by crafting an amendment that tried to remedy as many of those flaws as possible. I'm also sympathetic to the desire to release Stanley Spiegel from this ongoing misery. Mercy is a value in and of itself. We were finally able to show mercy to Gerald Alston, and I want that for Stanley Spiegel, too. In spite of these efforts, the original AC amendment unfortunately fell a bit short. It asked town meeting to bear the burden of sanctioning these funds, but deprived town meeting of virtually any mechanism for visibility into what happened after those funds were sanctioned. It asked town meeting to indemnify an individual because we should all want the same protection for ourselves, but without actually including any provision to ensure that any of us would be granted indemnity in the future. No.
Ms. McClellan, I don't believe I gave you any extra time, and you've had three minutes. Would you please conclude?
Yes, can I have, can I have one more minute?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. It did not ensure that any of us would be granted indemnity in the future or a comprehensive policy study to be brought back to Town Meeting. Though I regret that the moderators did not permit this second element to be added to the scope of the amendment, I've been encouraged to hear from both co-chairs of the Advisory Committee a commitment to convening a committee that will include Advisory Committee members and Town Meeting members to explore a comprehensive indemnification policy to be brought back to Town Meeting. That is an important, critical part of this. To recap, the amendment achieves something that I believe will not be achieved if the article is rejected. And I believe what has finally been arrived at via the final amendment is essentially marginally drinkable lemonade out of the lemons we were given. As such, I will be voting in favor of the Advisory Committee Amendment. That said, I will conclude by stating my personal request here now for the benefit, especially of the Select Board members who paved this path. In the future, if a pile of spoiled lemons is handed to you, rather than trying to give the juice to Advisory Committee and Town Meeting and hoping we don't notice, we're hoping we step up and muddle together a fix and a cover for you, please throw the lemons out and start again. Please join me in voting yes for this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldsmith. Mr. Goldstein, I'm not going to take a motion for the question yet. We'll hear from a couple more speakers and take some questions from the floor. Ms. Goldsmith?
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Good evening. Jen Goldsmith, Precinct 11. And I'm speaking, it's evolved over the course of the changes to the amendment from the Advisory, but I just want to say this. I'm speaking tonight with empathy but also frustration. And I think what is paramount to me is that there's a lot of both and going on in this. And I want to speak to what seems so troubling to me. I want to say this as a disclosure. I'm not a retired lawyer. I haven't pontificated on this, on the, on the listserv or tried to influence people with the pressure of saying I'm a lawyer, or because I'm an old buddy, or yelled at in the past with an at Marty Rosenthal or Stanley. I have empathy for Stanley and Marty. They're nice men. They both have advised me on how to navigate the fragility of our former moderator. They've been very kind to me. But we're not here as friends. We're here as representatives. And if any of you has discussed this, not among old friends on the listserv, but among your constituents, I think you would hear one consistent, "This smells rotten. It smells stinky. It smells of insiderism, and it is not good governance." We need to indemnify, but we also need to verify. And the reception from Mr. Rosenthal, that reviewing his bills is somehow an affront, even in the face of the judicial statement that the bills were excessive, seems troubling. We need to speak honestly but wisely. We need to be transparent but to verify. We need to respect our traditions in our community, but we also need to acknowledge we're in different times. The fact that there are people here who have been friends for decades is lovely and wonderful. But if this were the same plight that's befallen Stanley, were to have befallen someone you don't know for thirty years, I hope you would be as protective and supportive. But I don't have any confidence in that, actually, based on the dismissiveness I see on the listserv. This is not a two sides of the aisle issue, as was said by several of the early speakers. We're on the same side, which is good governance, not just insiderism. When I was named on the letter that Mr. Rosenthal included in the warrant in April, which said that I strongly support indemnification, I was taken by surprise that it showed up in the joint.
You have one minute.
Thank you, because I had heard nothing about the warrant article, because the warrant article came through a stinky path. It was brought to the Select Board. It didn't even get ten signatures. When I asked Kate Poverman whether that should be documented in the Town Meeting handbook, that that was a back path to get warrant passed, she said, "Oh, no, people just know about it." Well, people don't just know about it. Insiders know about it. And that is simply not what I want to be supportive of. When Kate said he got signatures, the clerk actually corrected Kate Poverman and emailed me and said, "No, he didn't get any signatures. He just went to the Select Board and got on that deal," or for paying money. And I do have one question for Mr. Rosenthal before I finish. And I say this with respect. The email that you sent today and the time you've spent working on this, is this billable as part of Stanley's case? Should we expect that these hours and those words are going to be part of what we're paying for when we likely end up paying your legal bills? That's a question, Mr. Rosenthal, and then I'll finish.
Well, you can join the questioners when we get to the questions. Mr. Green? Go ahead, Mr. Green.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, a member of the Select Board, and I am speaking solely for myself. First, thanks to John Karen and Gil Hoy and others who have taken on the task of what I'll call playing whack-a-mole on the listserv. They've contributed their time and energy, which I don't have, and expertise responding to what I will call, and excuse me, but Russian trolls, spewing out unending questions, allegations, misstatements, accusations, rumor, hearsay, and other irrelevancies. Remember, the purpose of trolls is to confuse, overwhelm, exhaust, anger, and demoralize you. That's how I feel from reading the listserv. It's really demoralizing. And the goal of a troll is to distract you from the simple issues before you. So I'm going to try to present what I think are three simple aspects to tonight's vote. First, there's a legal aspect. Town has a legal obligation to provide Stanley Spiegel with indemnification for his legal fees incurred to defend against this cruel lawsuit. I think Marty Rosenthal has clearly demonstrated that obligation. But don't get distracted by the chaff spewed out by the trolls the past few days to confuse us regarding legal fees. The reasonableness will be addressed by a neutral person, possibly a retired judge. And in the light of the fact that Town Meeting gave away $11 million in this case without giving any thought to details or the prudence of that giveaway, or asking for any evidence of uncompensated damages, Town Meeting really has no legal or moral basis for nickel-and-diming Stanley Spiegel on legal fees. And remember, Marty had an ethical duty as a lawyer to zealously pursue his clients. The third party or the neutral person that's going to look at his billing will determine whether they were reasonable, and we should trust that.
One minute.
Oh, can I have an extra minute, Mr. Moderator?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'll talk faster. Second is moral aspect. Stanley is an eighty-seven-year-old, eighty-six-year-old former mathematics professor who has contributed decades of his knowledge and expertise to Brookline. He's been burdened for years with this frivolous lawsuit because of his leadership role in town government. It's a matter of common decency. The Town Meeting voted to approve this appropriation. Finally, I want to focus on the personal aspect. It's personal for me, and it should be personal for you as Town Meeting members or other Town officials. It's personal for me because I was also targeted, and I was sued personally for properly doing my job as a Select Board member responsible for well-being and safety of our employees. This should also be personal to you, because you could be sued personally, too. And if you thought that the town would not indemnify you, would you be frightened into submission? You would have to think twice before acting or speaking. You'd be afraid to do what is right for the town out of fear of being sued, maybe being sued by a MAGA hat-wearing plaintiff upset by a warrant article that you submitted. That is why we can't turn our backs on Stanley Spiegel, despite all the questions and all the chaff thrown up into the atmosphere here. To do so, it set a dangerous precedent and would be wrong. And remember, that precedent could ensnare you. So for all these reasons and many, many more that I don't have time to go into, I urge you to vote favorable action on the Spiegel Budget Amendment as originally presented to us. I guess my question to the moderator is, if the revised amendment is voted down, are we back to the original budget amendment, which does not have the provision for hearing?
The answer is no.
Okay, thank you.
The only, the only motion on the floor is the most recent one from the Advisory Committee on this subject. Ms. Vogt? B O G G.
Hi, my name is Marissa Vogt. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct Four. I'm speaking tonight to ask you to vote no on the AC Amendment. Because one or more of our fellow Town Meeting members would financially benefit from this amendment, we are obligated to ensure that our process has been conducted in the most transparent and fair manner possible, and that the amount of the requested funds can be clearly justified. Unfortunately, with regards to transparency and accountability, our process has failed. I would like to vote in support of indemnifying Mr. Spiegel, not because of the fearmongering we've heard tonight, but because I feel sorry for what he has gone through. However, at this point, there are too many important unanswered unanswered questions, most crucially about the validity of the amount that is being requested for Mr. Spiegel's legal fees. To quote an email sent to the listserv this week by one of our colleagues, "I believe that, quote, 'we would be pushing the bounds of our constituents' trust not to require more information before voting in favor of paying a very large fee to one of our own members.'" Unfortunately, we are being asked to vote tonight on a motion that says payment shall be contingent on, one, a reasonable misreview by a neutral third party, and then quote, "or, two, authorization by the Select Board," end quote. Some folks would argue that the inclusion of this phrase doesn't really matter, because regardless of the exact wording of the AC motion, the Select Board always has the authority to settle this claim. We heard, we also heard the argument that there's no practical impact of or versus and. I understand those arguments, but I must respectfully disagree. I think those words matter. The motion as written is too weak. If Town Meeting wants a neutral third-party review of the cost, then we must say that. We must demand that the words of the motion clearly state our position. We want a neutral third-party review to occur, full stop. There cannot be an or. Whether a third-party review actually occurs or not may always be out of the control of Town Meeting, but we owe it to our constituents to do everything in our power to ensure that folks with insider status, whether real or perceived, do not receive preferential treatment, and that all of our town business is conducted in a fair and transparent manner. Please join me in voting no on the AC Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Karen, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 12. I'd like to talk about Stanley Spiegel. Stanley Spiegel did not deserve what was done to him. Earlier today, I circulated a copy of the Federal Court opinion upholding the sanctions against Brooks Ames. And just to quote from the end of that opinion by the Federal Court of Appeals for the First Circuit here in Boston, "Ames persisted in pursuing claims against Spiegel without an adequate basis and factor in law, despite a pointed warning from the magistrate judge. When, as in this case, zealous advocacy is based on nothing more than a wing and a prayer, it is sanctionable." Stanley Spiegel had a frivolous claim with no grounding in fact or law filed against him in federal court. It was dismissed. The magistrate told Mr. Ames that it was frivolous, and Mr. Ames refiled the exact same complaint essentially against Stanley, forcing him to incur more legal fees. The dismissals were appealed. The imposition of sanctions was appealed. All of this burden Stanley Spiegel, now an eighty-six-year-old retired math professor with large legal fees. It's a burden. It's a nasty burden to have hanging over anybody, both financially and emotionally. I wouldn't want it hanging over me at age twenty-six, at age thirty-six, at age fifty-six. And oh my God, I can't imagine what it's like to have it hanging over your head at age eighty-six. I mean, I can only imagine if that had been done to like my dad or one of your parents, unless you hated one of your parents. You would never want that. That's why people like Donald Trump threaten and go ahead and sue people who criticize them, because even if it's meritless, the burden of defending it, if you're a regular person, can be absolutely awful. And I'm a lawyer, and I don't know how I'd afford somebody like me if I needed one. So I've been asking people on the listserv, are you raising questions, or do you really believe that Stanley Spiegel doesn't deserve that he did something wrong, that he shouldn't be indemnified? If you do believe that Stanley deserves to be indemnified, then this is really easy, because the Advisory Committee motion provides that there'll be an independent review, probably by a retired judge or an experienced litigator. And, you know, Mr. Rosenthal and Mr. Spiegel have accepted the notion of having an independent review. I've done tougher deals. If we agree Stanley should be indemnified, it's easy. It's done. But I had asked people, if you think that he just doesn't deserve to be indemnified, stand up, have the courage to admit it, say, tell us that's what it's about. But if it's just about you want to make sure the bills are legit, and that you're not just enriching somebody unfairly, that's easy. That's a technical question. It's not a deal breaker. Deals like this get done all the time. We can do it. If you vote for the Advisory Committee motion, you've got that mechanism. And you know what? Let me say this. I'm encouraged, because I think some of the people I thought maybe thought Stanley didn't deserve to be indemnified do, and we're just trying to work out the details. And I'm hoping we can move forward, because if you believe Stanley didn't do anything wrong, then you should vote to indemnify an eighty-six-year-old Town Meeting member who voted for the Alston, who voted for the Alston settlement, even though the town didn't do anything at that time, to try to take care of him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. There's a motion for the question. I'm going to hear from one more person who signed up. We're going to take about three questions from the floor, and then I'll entertain the motion for the question. Ms. Wu?
Thank you, Mr. Assistant Moderator, Chi Chi Wu, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. So this has been quite a roller coaster for me. As many of you know, I'm also on an Advisory Committee. And when we came out of Advisory Committee last night, I was looking forward to voting yes on the motion, because we had not only had the amendment from Nicole McClellan, but also the important language to me, the and requiring an independent review and a vote by a Select Board. And as Marissa Vogt says, that and is important. And so you can imagine I was quite unhappy to hear that the moderator had ruled that and out of order. And I'd signed up to speak against this motion and was prepared to. And I was prepared to from a place in my gut, actually, because during this whole debate, like some of the other folks have mentioned, there's been a lot of this sentiment, oh, you know, we have to support Stanley. We've known him for thirty years. You know, he's our friend. And this, there was a lot of that on the Advisory Committee. And, you know, at one point, I had questioned not taking $20,000 off the top because of the District Court's decision, which even though it served as sanctions, explicitly said it was sanctions in the form of awarding attorney's fees. And I used the term double dipping, and I got jumped all over. And one person even said, you know, it is double dipping. That's fine. This is Stanley. He deserves twenty, an extra $20,000 for pain and suffering. And that's not how good town government works. People don't get reimbursed by the town for pain and suffering. You know, indemnification, maybe. My gut sense, though, was, okay, Stanley's really popular. You know who's not popular on Advisory? I'm sometimes not popular on Advisory. I get yelled at sometimes or scolded. Would you guys all come to my defense if I incurred $200,000 worth of attorney's fees on something? So this is the place from my gut that I'm very uncomfortable with this. I'm glad to hear there'll be a committee to make determinations about who gets identified and some firm policies. I'm glad that Chair Hamilton and John Van Skoyak have committed that there will be an independent review, even though this AC motion gives them the ability to skip that.
One minute.
It's very important to me that it not be skipped. You know, there is a Select Board member that just called a bunch of us trolls, and I, you know, I'm not so sanguine that, you know, that wouldn't be skipped in his case. But, you know, it seems like there are a majority of the Select Board, and I'm going to hold those folks. So I might just vote yes and change my mind again. As I said, this has been a roller coaster. But in any event, I do intend to hold the Select Board members that say that there will be an independent review, because that's what I'm counting on to deal with some of the issues of potential overbilling that have been discussed earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now take some questions. Ms. Zimmerman?
Hi. Can you hear me okay this time?
Go ahead.
Amanda Zimmerman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. I have a couple questions, largely because, because we are not making a comprehensive policy but are sort of setting precedent anyways in the current form. And so I'm wondering if Town Council can confirm what some of the earlier speakers have said. confirm what some of the earlier speakers have said, that Mr. Spiegel was acting as an agent of the town in the action involved in the lawsuit? And if the earlier questions onto whether or not that was true have to do with being a volunteer, as opposed to being paid, or the nature of the complaint?
Oh, you've cut out. You muted yourself, Ms. Zimmerman. Oh, okay. Well, uh, Mr. Simpson, uh, I don't know whether or to what extent you can respond to, uh, to Ms. Zimmerman's questions, but, uh, let's see what you have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jonathan Simpson, Associate Town Counsel for the Town of Brookline. I think they, there is no question that, uh, Mr. Spiegel is potentially covered by, uh, Section thirteen as a, as an appointed official of the town. The, the question of, of whether or not he's an, he's an agent, uh, is, is answered in the, in the affirmative. Uh, the, there, there is, um, some, uh, to the extent there, there are, people have raised the question, there, there, notwithstanding Mr. Rosenthal's insistence, I, I believe that, you know, there, the, the gray area, if to the extent there is, is one, is whether he was, um, acting in the entrance of the town at the time of the, the conduct. Um, but, but again, I, I believe that what's critical for our discussion here um, really sets aside a lot of the, the legal, uh, the questions that might be raised if, if we were in an adversarial process. This is, as many people have raised already. This is an opportunity for Town Meeting to send a strong message that they believe that the, uh, the question of identification should be set aside, uh, and we should be talking about reasonableness, uh, of the, of the fees by way of the third-party review.
Thank you, Ms. Nobrega. Ms. Nobrega? Well, we'll move along to Mr. Hoy.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, uh, I essentially had the same question as-
Who are you?
Gil Hoy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct thirteen. And I essentially had the same question as Ms. Zimmerman, or at least the answer covered it. So my question has been answered.
Thank you, Ms. Schweitzer. S W.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Ms. Schweitzer. Yes.
Good evening, Naomi Schweitzer, Precinct ten. Um, my question, um, relates to something on page twenty-two of our Town Meeting Handbook, which says, "Any Town Meeting Member who is party to a potential conflict of interest should consider voluntarily abstaining from voting on the article in question. The moderator will, on request, announce any such abstention before or after the vote on the main motion under the article. And I'm wondering if you're aware of any abstentions under this article."
Nobody is asked to abstain? All right, uh, okay, Ms. Nobrega. Are you with us? Well, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Nobrega, we apparently the communications have failed. All right. I'll have one more question from Ms. Maddox.
Hi, Ariel Maddox, Town Meeting Member, Precinct ten. Can Town Council weigh in on what kind of evidence we can expect the third party to review?
I'm sorry, on what?
What kind of evidence we expect the third party to review?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Simpson?
Uh, I, I don't want to speculate, uh, but, um, our, I, I believe it would be, uh, the, the bills, at, at a minimum, the bills that, um, Mr. Rosenthal and the two other attorneys working on the case sent to Stanley, which would presumably, uh, itemize, uh, the, the, the man in which they were billed. I, but I honestly, that would be speculative. Um, we will, however, both, um, my office, as well as the third party we retain, feel, believe that we will be fully within our rights to request whatever information we believe we need to do this review from Mr. Rosenthal and the other two attorneys.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion for the question. Is there a second? Mr. Tuckman moves. The question, is there a second? Motion has been seconded. I have the following people signed up. I have no more, no other speakers signed up opposing. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I've been trying to ask about a, a personal privilege on some of the things that have been said, names, like, I could give the list, but-
You're, you're raising a question of privilege, Mr. Rosenthal? Well, go ahead. State your question of privilege.
Well, there, there are several things that, um, like the word nepotism, like the word overbilling, uh, like, uh, the, uh, issue of, uh, cronyism. I just want to respond briefly to some of those things, if I could.
Well, you can have one minute to respond, Mr. Rosenthal.
All right, well, relative to, uh, both bringing this article and also the, um, contingency fee, who else could, could bring this article? The way the article was put on the warrant was because I heard there was going to be an Alston settlement proposed for Town Meeting, and I thought this should go with it. The select board, in their wisdom, separated the two, but did put it on the warrant. So that's the only reason I came to Town Meeting after six years of frustration about trying to get this indemnity. The, uh, people have misquoted the Judge Kelly decision. It did not say overbilling. She did use the word overlitigating, but it was irrelevant to her decision, because that's, that law, Rule eleven does not compensate. It's punitive, it's deterrents. And she reduced, uh, we asked for five hundred dollars an hour, which is our market rate. Instead, she said we were worth closer to what we actually got paid by Stanley. I've only charged three hundred an hour for six years, which is well below what I charge everyone else. The, um, last thing that I want to, um, mention is the, uh, uh, I don't know, well, I guess I already a- a- alluded to the, uh, nepotism issue. If this were nepotism, why have I failed for six years? I mean, my nepotism was pretty damn weak, frankly. And here I am for Town Meeting to get some closure on all of this. And, um, what I, what I was going to close with before for the entire matter of the Alston cases, from Rabbi Hillel, if not us, who? And if not now, when? Please vote for the amended article.
All right, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you.
Uh, all right, we have a motion for the question. The motion has been seconded. I have, uh, no one else, as I say, signed up in opposition to the, uh, these are mainly, uh, to the Advisory Committee's, um, proposal. I have the following people signed up to speak in favor. Mr. Hoy, Mr. Gordon, Mr. Selwyn, Mr. Levy, Mr. Nangle, Ms. Flanagan, Ms. Roseman, and Mr. Tyndall. I have the following people, uh, at the microphones to ask questions or make comments. Ms. Moutner, Mr. Gashak, Ms. Goldsmith, Ms. Brown, uh, Mr. Margolis, Mr. Benson, Mr. Toffel, and Ms. Fisher. And Bonnie Bastian, I'm sorry. I'm sorry? And Linda Olson Pelkey. Yep. Uh, so, on the, if you vote in favor of the motion for the question, and it takes a two-thirds vote, uh, you will be foreclosing our opportunity to hear from the people whose names I've mentioned. A point of order, by- Ms. Goldsmith, you have a point of order?
I, I think it's a point of order. Is there a way to vote for the questions, but not for more speakers? It sounds like the speakers are all on one side, and we've heard a lot from that side. But do we have to listen to seven speakers just to get to some questions?
If you, if you vote, uh, if you do not vote to terminate debate, I will call on more speakers on the pro side, and I will call on a couple of, uh, people who want to ask questions or have comments from the floor. That's in my, uh, in my discretion.
And would it, it wouldn't be in your discretion to do the questions before the speakers?
I can, I'll, I'll face that if you, uh, want to continue the debate.
Thank you.
So, uh, if you, uh, vote to terminate, I mean, if you vote to terminate the debate, and there's a two-thirds vote, then we will have no more speakers, and we'll proceed directly to vote first on the Advisory Committee's amendment, and second on the main motion on page one dash four. If you, uh, if you vote down the effort to terminate debate, I will, uh, continue to call on speakers in the order in which I select them. We're ready for a vote. All right, the voting period has commenced. Voting period has elapsed. May I have the count, please? Sharon? Shopman? Unmute and, uh, give us your vote. Motion fails. Uh, Mr. Gordon, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tyndall. You have three minutes. T Y N. T Y N D A L L. Okay. All right. Ms. Flanagan?
Hi, my name is Jane Flanagan. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct fifteen. The question here is about an accusation. Is it a reason to be sued? And no, it is not. And the court said so more than once. Why? Because this sort of frivolity threatens free speech as we know it. It threatens our democracy. Six years later, Stanley has still not been indemnified. So more years of angst, more years of personal expense and torture to pay the lawyers' fees, lawyers whose fees are now being called into question, is if they were now on trial. It is important to note that whether they were reasonable fees or not, this will be reviewed. Tonight, we are asking about our, we're talking about our fellow Town Meeting Members, Marty Rosenthal and Stanley Spiegel, who between them have given over eighty years of service to this town. They never asked for a salary, and they're not secretly asking for one now. Whether or not you agree with them or not, they have been volunteers who've served this town, and their focus has been to make this town the best it can be. What I hope for tonight is that even if for some reason we do not always agree with the person presenting the argument, or dislike the AC, or whatever the issue may be, that our best selves would want to hear each other, be empathetic towards another human being, and then vote the way we know in our head, in our heart, is best, not to vote to destroy or break another person or persons in some sort of hurt-like fashion. Stanley has proven to be a man of service. His work as a professor in mathematics at the University of Massachusetts at Lowell and has serviced this town, evidence of that. He deserves our support. The bottom line is that being sued for free speech has and had, will continue to have, a chilling effect on our democracy in this town. I urge you to please listen, be reflective, and vote your truth. Mine is to vote yes on the AC motion. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Stanley, for your service, and thank you, Marty, for your service to this town.
Uh, Ms. Moutner?
Good evening, Rebecca Moutner from Precinct eleven. Uh, certainly, as someone who has been sued in a frivolous lawsuit, Mr. Spiegel has my sympathy, and I know how incredibly unpleasant and expensive it can be. Um, I had a question about the level of transparency that will be required under the AC motion prior to the determination of what should be paid. Um, under the AC amendment, would the Town Council, whoever's overseeing the review of the reasonableness of the fees, would their review be shared with the public? And if we do not approve the AC motion, is there any expectation that details of Mr. Rosenthal's invoices, both the tasks performed and the amount billed, would be shared with the select board or AC prior to determination of what might be paid?
Well, if there's no, uh, if the motion of the Advisory Committee fails, there's no investigation of anything. Um, Mr., um, Mr. Simpson, uh, on the first question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, Jonathan Simpson, Associate Town Counsel for the Town of Brookline. Generally, these, uh, these documents are, um, would be generally kept confidential. Um, the, we would be bound, the, both our office and the, whoever we retain would be ethically bound to report on them honestly and accurately. But, um, I do not believe that, that the contents of the, of the invoices would, would generally be shared. No.
Thank you. And Mr. Sandman, did you have something to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mike Sandman, uh, uh, Advisory Committee Chair and Town Meeting Member, Precinct three. So this has been a, a topic of some conversation with, with Mr. Rundahl, who's been concerned that confidential information would be shared, and there's nothing in the motion that suggests that. But you ask a very sensible question. What's the level of detail that reviewer would go into? The reviewer should really get into the guts of the billing and look at how many hours were billed for what kind of work. A motion that takes X number of hours normally, is that what was billed? Uh, and then the reviewer should aggregate all of that, give it back to, uh, the Advisory Committee and report, and to the select board and report. But in aggregated form, uh, this is what I think the, uh, the total should be. But again, uh, the confident, the, the, the billing information is confidential. The aggregation is absolutely public. And we would expect, um, that, as I said, I apologize for being redundant, but the reviewer would really get into the guts of it.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Gashak?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, David Gashak, Precinct thirteen. I was not going to speak tonight. I was pleased with and grateful for the good, good, hard work that Mr. Sandman and Ms. Banka and their Advisory Committee colleagues and Ms. McClellan and others did to find a path forward under which Mr. Spiegel could be appropriately indemnified for having been sued for statements he made allegedly in his capacity as a town government volunteer, while the amount of that indemnification would be subject to a rigorous review for reasonableness. But then one of our select board members made some remarks, and I had to come to the mic. No, those of us who have asked tough questions and raised serious concerns about this warrant- No, those of us who have asked tough questions and raised serious concerns about this warrant article, just like the federal courts did about the fee petition for sanctions, are not quote Russian trolls, end quote. They are elected representatives doing their jobs. They are representing their constituents zealously and carefully. They are taking their fiduciary responsibilities seriously. They are trying to ensure that town meeting treats everyone in town on equal terms and does not engage in inappropriate short cutting or self-dealing with two of our own members who have many friends in this body. In a debate that otherwise has extolled the importance of free speech and vigorous discussion, I was so dismayed that one of our select board members basically just told everyone to shut up, stop meddling, and trust the insiders to deal.
That isn't quite what he said.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator.
Let's not, let's not exaggerate the, uh, the issue.
Mr. Moderator, I will continue my remarks, please, in the time I have with the other insiders that went to the mic. We have to treat all in front of this body equally. We have to ask tough questions. That's our responsibility. Thank you to the A C, to Ms. McClellan and everyone who has charted a path forward here. I urge everyone to vote yes on the A C's motion and not to disparage those who are asking hard questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Neil Gordon, Precinct One Town Meeting Member, and I'm a member of the advisory committee. Several weeks ago, I came before you and I said this, quoting divisive incivility is what too often happens when we dare speak up, unquote. I was talking about retaliation in social media and on the listserv. What happened to Stanley Spiegel was far worse. Stanley Spiegel spoke up on an important matter concerning the town. He had every right, I'll say he had an obligation, as an involved elected town meeting member and at the time advisory committee member to do so. Stanley Spiegel spoke up and in an act of apparent retaliation, he was frivolously sued. So much so that in addition to the case being twice dismissed, opposing counsel was sanctioned and fined, punished to the extent of twenty thousand dollars by the federal court. In the eyes of the court, Stanley Spiegel did nothing wrong. In fact, he's the only individual defendant in the Alston case who's been completely and consistently vindicated. And he's the only individual defendant the town has so far refused to indemnify. Irony at its best. Just a few town meetings ago, I brought an article that amended our bylaws, allowing non-citizens to serve on most boards, committees, and commissions. We just voted on articles brought by Bonnie Bastian and others favoring hybrid meetings. Thanks to Chi Chi Wu and others, we'll be voting on removing or at least mitigating language barriers. Our redistricting committee is recommending the creation of two majority-minority precincts. By these actions, we collectively strive, as we should, for community engagement and broader and more diverse participation by Brookline residents and town government. But each and every one of those good efforts is chilled, if not frozen, by the prospect that volunteering might lead to litigation. And worse, that a select board representing the town we selflessly serve might then leave us, as they left Stanley Spiegel, to fend for themselves. For years, contrary to a plain reading of statute and case law, contrary to the will of Brookline voters and contrary to public policy, the select board failed to protect Stanley Spiegel. Tonight, we need to change that because divisive incivility is wrong. Retaliation is wrong. I join the select board, the advisory committee, Brookline PACS, and our Town Meeting Member Association. I urge you favorable action on the appropriation of funds to finally, reasonably, and civilly indemnify Stanley Spiegel. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Nobrega, we'll try again.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Success. Thank you. Mariah Obrega, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four, and I'm also a member of the school committee. And I'm only going to mention my role in the school committee because every week I go to town hall and I review the bills of the school department before any payment is issued. And that is every bill as small as an order for a box of pencils. That's my fiduciary responsibility as a member of the school committee, as the member who's responsible for approving the bills. Now, the select board has delegated the fiduciary responsibility here to town meeting and not given us the tools to exercise the responsibility. This is not town meeting's responsibility. It should not have been delegated to us, and I will vote no. Not because I don't think the, the right thing should be done for people in Stanley's position. I do believe that the right thing should be done. But because I haven't been given the information needed to evaluate this, it's entirely the select board's fiduciary responsibility. They didn't need to send it to us like they had to for Alston. And no matter what we vote, they can still exercise that responsibility. I look forward to the successful resolution of this by the select board, using the mechanisms for transparency that Chair Hamilton has committed to. Good governance matters. Fiduciary responsibility matters. I will be voting no for these reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goldsmith, you, we, uh, you left your, uh, presentation with a question and I'll now let you ask that question.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Goldsmith, Precinct Eleven. I have two questions and the second one depends on the first. So my first question, um, is for Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Rosenthal, the emails that you wrote and the time you've spent preparing for town meeting, is this part of what would be covered by your services for Mr. Spiegel?
I think a simple yes or no will do, Mr. Rosenthal.
Are we, the question is, are we being charged with this or do we risk being charged for this time?
Mr. Rosenthal?
Okay, well, I can give a sentence, but I don't know about yes or no because the contingency fee is seventeen percent of the recovery. That's how I'm, I've been, I haven't received a nickel for this in six years and I'm hoping to get, uh, his legal fees back and get seventeen percent of it, which is a very low percentage for a contingency fee, so.
So yes, we're paying for, yes, at a discount rate, is what you're saying?
No, I've, I've got nothing, will get nothing unless we get a recovery and then I'm asking for seventeen percent of it, which will be reviewed by the independent reviewer to see if that's a reasonable, uh, fee. And then it'll be up to the select board to accept that review, whatever the decision is.
Right, but the way I hear it, I let me, I'm just clarifying my question, Mr. Moderator.
We're not going to have a, uh.
So then my second question, I'll, let me just go to the second question then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so the second question, Mr. Rosenthal, the email we received today, like, how long in terms of hours billed does an email like that take to write?
Well, he's not charging for this, the email that he wrote today, so.
Well, he, it sounds like at a discounted rate, he would be. I'm just curious. Like, I, I'm just trying to understand, because that was an email that came to us on this issue that it sounds like if everything goes the way you want, you'll be compensated for it at a discount rate, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Well, I did my best on the last one, which is I, I, I'm not billing Stanley. I have never billed Stanley for the work on indemnity. Uh, and I'm attempting to recover this from the town and bill the town for seventeen percent of the recovery, which is much less than the usual contingency arrangement. So if we go to court, I, I could construct bills for all this time and easily over two hundred hours and at my market rate of five hundred an hour. So you can do that math or else I could.
Okay. Ms. Goldsmith, you're just going to have to be satisfied with the answer you've received. Mr. Levy? I'll take.
I'm a county member from precinct seven. And so I am a turkey, not.
You're, you've muted yourself. Unmute yourself, Mr.
Okay, um, this has been a very difficult debate for me to listen to. And, uh, debate that's been taking place on various forums, including the town meeting members' listserv has been very painful for me to some degree because I know and like both Stanley and Marty and I don't like hearing them being accused by innuendo of corruption or, uh, trading on favoritism. Uh, and frankly, I don't think that's the case. I, most of the questions I kept getting asked, asked have been answered in the, the, uh, materials that went out with the combined reports or the supplements. Uh, there is no question that the select board has in the past. And I can remember at least two or three occasions in the last few years where someone has said, had come to the, uh, select board, passed the deadline for the closing of the warrant and said, can you put this on the warrant? And they weren't all insiders. They weren't all people who are hugely popular. But the select board, one of the issues was important. Sometimes it uses this discretion to put stuff on the warrant without, uh, strictly following the usual rules. It's their prerogative, it's their right. And in cases where there's a real important list, uh, a really important, uh, issue is their duty. You know, people know me who, who have been following my wonderful screens on town meeting listserv know that I've got two big issues. One is that we should only talk about the relevant questions. And the other is that we should not be shaming or blaming or by innuendo, uh, downgrading the character of our fellow town meeting members or anybody else. Because that is, in fact, not a relevant issue in almost every case. Both of those things have been happening. People have been ignoring the relevant issues and people have, uh, done what? I won't say character assassination, but you were using the tactic of asking questions which tended to put Marty and Stanley not on the hot seat for getting answers, but on the hot seat for making them look like they're bad people and that we shouldn't support them.
Yep, please conclude.
Those are both very dangerous areas. I certainly am going to vote for Marty. I've tried very hard to keep my personal fondness for them out of it. I can't guarantee that I did. I can't get, people who have spoken against them can't guarantee that their personal feelings towards Marty or Stanley have not influenced their decisions. And, uh, I think it's time to look at the main points. Is Stanley entitled to, uh, by a matter of law?
Please conclude.
... And, uh, is a review by town council and, uh, and third party enough to guarantee?
Mr. Levy, these points have all been made.
Excuse me?
These points have all been made. Please conclude.
I just concluded.
Thank you very much. Uh, I have a cacophony of motions for the question here. A move by Ms. Silbaugh, seconded by Mr. Rudolph to, uh, call the question. I have the following people signed up to speak in favor of the advisory committee's position. Hoy, Selwyn, Nangle, and Ms. Roseman. I have the following people lined up to ask questions or make comments. Mr. Margolis, Mr. Benson, Mr. Toffel, Ms. Fisher, Ms. Bastian, Ms. Pelkey, Ms. Greenwall, Mr. Banka, Mr. Rudolph, and Mr. Tuckman. Against that background, if you vote to terminate debate, we won't hear from any of them. If you vote to, uh, not to terminate debate, I will continue to call on people as I see fit. We're ready for a vote. The voting period has commenced. Who's on the phone? Time, what's the count? Motion carries by a two thirds vote. Hundred and fifty-two in favor, sixty-eight opposed, and six abstentions. We move now to a vote on the advisory committee motion on page one of supplement number four. It is the motion that you've, uh, heard discussed considerably with, to, uh, uh, transfer or to reduce the reserve fund by a hundred and eight, ninety-eight thousand to transfer that, those funds to the, um, Office of Town Council and so on to, uh, cover any, uh, indemnification that's paid to Mr. Spiegel under the procedures set forth in that motion. A, uh, vote in favor, of course, will, uh, approve this motion and the procedures that it sets forth. Vote opposing, vote, uh, against this motion will leave us with no, uh, motion relating to Mr. Spiegel's indemnification. And we will then move to the budget adjustments on page one dash four. On the advisory committee's amendment on page one of supplement number four. We're ready for a vote. The voting period has commenced. Voting period has terminated. That motion carries by a vote of a hundred and ninety-five in favor, twenty-five opposed, and eight abstentions. We now vote on the main motion on page one dash four as amended by the advisory committee motion. And we're ready for a vote. Time and the vote, please. That motion carries by a vote of two hundred ten in favor, nine opposed, and seven abstentions. I will now entertain a motion to dissolve the special town meeting number two. Please have somebody make that motion. Michael. Michael Zorab moves. Is there a second? Uh, the motion has been seconded. Uh, this is a vote to dissolve the special town meeting within the special and we will resume with the regular agenda for the regular false town meeting. If this, uh, motion passes, if it doesn't pass, uh, well, we'll wallow around in the special, within the special for a while, I guess. Ready for a vote? Ready for a vote? Time is up, may I have the vote, please? Motion carries by a vote of 217 in favor, two opposed, and three abstentions. I declare the special town meeting number two dissolved. Before we resume with the regular fall special town meeting, we will, in accordance with the town current moderator's, uh, usual practice, have a five-minute recess, which I will call the conquest research, recess. And I will call you back to order in about five minutes. So catch your breath. I now, uh, declare we're reconvening the regular fall special town meeting, uh, the adjourned session. And, uh, we start with Article 10, and once again, I'm, uh, going to ask town meetings' indulgence and, uh, ask for a postponement of consideration of Article 10 until first thing on the next, at the next session, which is on November 30. And the reason for that is that I am the, uh, drafter of the main motion and the presenter, and I cannot both moderate and present. So this is a motion to postpone Article 10 to November 30. So the, uh, voting period has commenced. Voting period is over, may I have the count, please? Motion carries by a vote of 179 in favor, three opposed, and six abstentions. So we will start our proceedings on November 30 with, uh, Article 10. Article 14, no motion is offered under Article 14, and we move directly to Article 15, where the main motion is found on pages 15 dash one through 15 dash three. And, uh, it's moved by Ms. Wu, seconded by Ms. Granoff. And, uh, would you please turn to page 15 dash one because we have some editing to do with the main motion, which is, uh, we have to craft from the article itself. So the first line of the motion, which starts to see if the town will adopt the following new article, et cetera, that should read, voted that the town adopt the following new article. And then in place of XX, in everywhere it appears in the, uh, article, substitute the number 26. On page 15 dash two, under section 3.26.3 in the middle of the page, the second line, delete the words full-time. So it will read, which shall be a position within the Office of Diversity, et cetera. And on page 15 dash three, strike the last line of the article, which is, or act on anything relative thereto. And you have before you a motion. And I call on Ms. Wu, who will have five minutes to present.
Thank you, Mr. Assistant Moderator. Is my PowerPoint available? Thank you, IT Department. Good evening, Chi Chi Wu, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. And I have the fun position of presenting right after the last discussion. I'm hoping the topic I'm speaking on will be a little less contentious. I'm presenting on warrant, Article 15 about language access. And the reason I'm, uh, so the genesis of this particular warrant article is, if you remember back in March, um, there was a horrific shooting in Atlanta in which eight people were killed, including six Asian-American women who were targeted. And, um, it was after a terrible year, and still ongoing anti-Asian racism. Um, and all the, all these folks in town sign up to a statement saying that they supported the Asian-American community, and that was great. But we thought, well, let's, let's go beyond statements now, and let's take some concrete steps to support the Asian-American community. And one of the steps was, uh, that we thought about was language access. Um, after all, Asian-Americans, according to a preliminary analysis of the census data, are now 19% of the town's population, or basically one in five residents. So next slide, please. So took a look at the census data, and, uh, turns out about 10% of the Brookline population speak English less than very well, limited English proficient or LEP. Of those, 3,400 speak in Asian language, 6% of residents, and nearly 1,200 speak an Indo-European language, likely Russian or Spanish. And 7% have a disability, um, which may affect their ability to communicate a visual or hearing impairment. Um, and so we actually have a significant population of LEP residents. Next slide, please. Um, under federal law, recipients of federal funding are required to provide language access with, for the services that they're providing with, with such funding. So Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, as interpreted by Executive Order 13166, requires the recipients to conduct a needs, four-factor needs analysis, develop a language access plan, and provide language assistance. Also, the Americans with Disabilities Act requires, um, public entities to take appropriate steps to ensure effective communications. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned before, the obligation to provide language access is due to federal funding. And as everyone here knows, the town is about to receive $43 million in American Rescue Plan funds, which creates a heightened obligation to provide language access services, but also the opportunity to make sure that any program that we are developing and implementing using this $43 million is available to all our residents, including the 10% who are LEP. The disparity report, which Town Meeting voted to, to have, uh, written and produced in November 2020, identified language access, uh, as a disparity, and the town doesn't have a language access plan. Town Council has, um, circulated a memo suggesting that we should have a language access plan if we're getting $43 million in federal funding. Next slide, please. So this is what the warrant article does. It creates a bylaw that requires the town to conduct that four-factor needs analysis to create a language access plan, to have a language access coordinator placed in the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. Originally, the warrant article, as you heard, um, it said it would be a full-time position. Advisor Committee struck the full-time part, um, and petitioners have accepted that amendment. So we have a unified motion. Um, in addition to the coordinator, it, the warrant article would require each public-facing town department to have a language access liaison to deal with language access issues, and to have a line item in the budget for interpretation, translation, and for auxiliary aid and services, um, for the disabled, to serve the town employees for language accessibility and their willingness to serve as interpreters and translators, and to, um, implement other recommendations for language access from the disparity study as a suggestion. Next slide, please.
Much more time, I think you may, excuse me.
This is the last slide, um, it's about 30 seconds. So this, originally in the report, we had estimated the cost would be about 200,000 a year, 80,000 for the language access coordinator, and 200,000, 120,000 for the line items, uh, in the budget. But according to the Advisor Committee, as you'll hear, the cost is probably going to be lower because some of the town departments already provide language access. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granoff. You have five minutes as well.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Susan Granoff, Precinct Seven, Town Meeting Member, speaking for the Advisory Committee, which recommends favorable action on warrant Article 15 by a vote of 19 to one with four abstentions. Why does the AC think it's important for Town Meeting to pass Article 15? There are four key reasons. First, because not doing so could potentially jeopardize the $43 million in federal, in federal ARPA funding that the town is scheduled to receive. As Ms. Wu pointed out, all recipients of federal funding must comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. According to Associate Town Council Jonathan Simpson, the town's receipt of ARPA funding requires it to certify that the town as a whole, and not simply a few individual departments, is compliant with Title VI. In his opinion, the town would be best served by undertaking a town-wide four-factor analysis of the interactions of LEP individuals with each of the town's departments, and by developing a language access plan to provide appropriate language assistance to LEP individuals who come into contact with town departments. Article 15 explicitly covers both of these requirements, and therefore enacting and implementing Article 15 would bring the town into full unquestionable compliance with Title VI, and thereby protect the town's federal funding. Second reason to support Article 15 is because we know that there is a need for language access services by our town departments, even if we don't know at present the exact extent of that need. U.S. Census Bureau data tells us that as of 2019, nearly 30% of Brookline's population was foreign-born, and nearly 10% of its population were LEP individuals. The public schools of Brookline currently spend about $120,000 a year on interpretation and translation services to LEP Brookline students and their families with respect to school-related interactions and documents sent home. So presumably, there's also a need for similar town-side interpretation and translation services. The four-factor analysis required by Article 15 would help us to more exactly identify and understand this need. The third reason to support Article 15 is because creating a language access coordinator is a permanent position in the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations would be a real benefit to both the town and to LEP individuals. Having a clearly designated staff person with expertise in language access issues to help develop and implement the town's language access plan, and to monitor and assist our town's departments continuing compliance with it will lead to a more efficient, consistent, and cost-effective implementation of this plan. Moreover, even after the creation of this plan, there will be a continuing need for the language access coordinator to publicize the town's increased language access services so that the people in need of these services will know that they are available and how to access them. Additionally, a language access coordinator would serve as an advocate for the language access needs of Brookline's LEP residents. And LEP individuals would know who to turn to for help in navigating an unfamiliar and probably confusing array of town departments. The fact that Article 15 has been revised so that it no longer requires that this position be full-time means that the town will be able to adjust the hours of this position to the town's actual needs for it over time. The fourth and final reason for enacting Article 15 is that doing so would send a strong message that Brookline is a welcoming community to individuals from diverse countries, and that having limited English proficiency is no barrier to interacting with our town's government. For all of these reasons, the Advisory Committee urges favorable action on warrant Article 15. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. You have three minutes, should you need it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator Raul Fernandez, Vice Chair of the Select Board and a co-petitioner on this article, speaking on behalf of a majority of the Select Board, and I will be brief. The merits of and requirements for providing language access services for essential town services and communications is not a new concept. Such services are already mandated for recipients of federal funding in accordance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. The town acknowledges that it has an obligation to provide services and information to all residents of our community. Municipal and school departments currently provide language translation services in several areas. This article challenges the town to do better and to make these services more responsive and effective based on a systematic approach of planning and staffing. The Select Board is supportive of this bylaw proposal and acknowledges that the town has an increasing obligation for these services based upon changes in the demographics of our community, combined with an infusion of federal aid via the American Recovery Plan. I'll note that the three petitioners include among us a member of the Select Board, a member of the School Committee, and a member of the Advisory Committee, all of whom have experience with and understand the need to work collaboratively with staff to make this bylaw work. We are also all in support of the AC's helpful amendment. So is a three-two majority of the Select Board, which urges favorable action on that amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Brown?
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Deborah Brown, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four deals with race, color, and national origin. You heard some of the statistics, twenty-two percent, give or take, of Massachusetts is limited English proficiency. ARPA should not be the reason that we comply with Title VI or the limited English proficiency requirements. We've been out of compliance for thirty years. We've been out of compliance for at least thirty years. So this is about actually coming into compliance belatedly. I asked in two thousand seventeen why we didn't have limited English proficiency. We've been taking money from HUD. We take money from Health and Human Services. We get some money from the Department of Transportation, U.S. Department of Transportation. All of these agencies have requirements for limited English proficiency, as well as anti-discrimination language. This provision is not going to make us a welcoming community. It will keep us from being out of compliance and losing federal dollars. And I don't want us to confuse the two. This is a bare minimum of compliance. And so I would encourage you to support it because if you can't get your limited English proficiency right, then sadly, there's a lot of other things about, around race, color, national origin discrimination, you're probably getting very wrong. And at some point in time, should this town ever be the subject of a discrimination complaint, a federal discrimination complaint, trust me, one of the areas that they will look at is the limited English proficiency. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noobrega.
Thank you. Mariah Noobrega, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four, speaking as a co-petitioner to urge you to vote favorable action on Warren Article fifteen. First, I want to thank Chi Chi for serving as the lead author of this warrant article, which is long overdue. I am the proud member of a bilingual family. We speak both Portuguese and English at home. I am also someone who has lived abroad, in my case in Brazil, and in my time living there, needed to interact with government. I can say that even though I am fluent in Portuguese, the difficulty of understanding official forms and government advisories makes it exceedingly difficult as a non-native speaker to successfully engage with government. Think about how some of the formal writing in our bylaws compares to everyday English, how different they are. Think about how you would fill in a parking permit application if the form were written in German without any help, or how you would request a residential exemption if the form were written in Mandarin. Having had this experience, I am extremely sympathetic to non-native English speakers, and particularly those with limited English proficiency. This is a genuine barrier to civic participation and one that we are legally obligated to break down. As described earlier, there is a large percentage of our community members to whom this applies. These are our neighbors. Their experience of Brookline is much different than ours. It is long past time to take down these barriers. Please join me in voting yes on Warren Article fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Schoyak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator John Van Schoyak from the Select Board. The petitioners of Article fifteen have focused attention on a situation which I will be the first to admit I underestimated. Language access requirements in a town such as Brookline are significant. We need to do more than the average town or city to address them. Average isn't good enough. I will whole, I will vote wholeheartedly for the version of Article fifteen you have in front of you tonight. But I asked for time to speak so that I could make a point as to how I think Article fifteen could have been better. We should all want our town hall staff to be energized, creative, and dedicated to meeting the need for language access and every other obligation of the town as well. In that spirit, I wish the petitioners of Article fifteen had accepted some substitute language that I proposed. Article fifteen is in one part an affirmation of the need for the strongest possible language access policy. That part is not what caused me concern, but Article fifteen goes beyond affirming policy. The article adds language that essentially tells our administrative staff the steps they must take to put policy into practice, and that's where I have a problem. In my experience, the best organizations are those that inspire everyone from top to bottom of the organizational chart to feel respected for the ideas and skills they bring to the job, to be more than hired help, to be problem solvers, and to be rewarded for getting the job done. They won't feel that respect, and they will be less likely to stretch themselves to prove their value if we presume to solve every problem for them. I fear this latter approach, telling our staff not just the job to be done, but also how to do it, is one that recent town meeting articles, including this one, have too often reflected. So my bottom line is simply this: Vote yes on Article fifteen because asserting that language access needs, language access needs to be lifted up and improved is the right thing to do. However, I hope those who craft future articles will give thought to what I have said tonight. And if they don't, I will say it again. Brookline deserves enthusiastic management by staff who feel honored for their professionalism in their jobs. We need to bring out their best because we and they deserve nothing less. And if I may just add a personal note so that people maybe won't think I'm just an eccentric old guy with an eccentric idea. I did try to get this approved, my, my language change approved by the Select Board, and I failed by one vote. And I tried to get it approved by the Advisory Committee, and I failed by one vote. So I think maybe there is some movement in this direction. I hope so. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Neufind.
Thank you. My name is Bettina Neufind. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct One. I was extremely grateful to the authors of this warned article and am very pleased to support it, and I hope that you will vote in favor for all of the reasons already stated. It is really a critical and long unmet need. As a parent at the Lawrence School, where on my first day I participated in an international night, I learned that there were sixty different countries represented in the student body at Lawrence alone. I came to this country as a seven-year-old child and was lucky enough to have a dedicated teacher every day who would pull me out of my English class and work with me so that I could participate beyond simply saying the word no, which was what I came in with. And after about six weeks, I was able to fully participate in the rest of my classes' English Language Arts curriculum. I was speaking to another Lawrence mom just a few days ago, who, like me, has a sixth grader and a senior, and who has been at Lawrence for many years. And she was telling me that she was not sure that her Brookline High School senior was going to be able to successfully complete the college application process. And she was unable to communicate enough with staff at the high school or in the town to know whether she would be able to access resources if he was not able to manage the process this year, or whether he was simply out of luck. I asked her whether she would like to contribute her comments to Town Meeting, and she said to me, "I don't think that I would be able to write them out. Could you deliver them for me?" And it was striking to me that in spite of all of the help already offered by the public schools of Brookline, we are not reaching all of the parents and we are not reaching all of the children.
One minute.
Thank you. I agree entirely with previous speakers who have noted that our obligation really is much greater than what the legal minimum is. And I really look forward to having this article passed and then to having the town go above and beyond that to actually engage all of our residents in public life and in private needs. Thank you.
Now, there are several motions for the question, and I'm pleased to say that those are not necessary since we have run out of speakers and there's nobody in the queue. So on the, we will now vote on the main motion, which is on pages fifteen dash one to three. As amended, as I indicated at the beginning of the, this discussion, a vote in favor is a vote to approve this bylaw amendment. A vote opposed is a vote to not to approve it. And we're ready for this main motion, Article fifteen. We're ready for a vote. The voting period has commenced. Time, nail the vote, please. Motion carries by a vote of two hundred fifteen in favor, two opposed, and five abstentions. Article sixteen, this relates to the Driscoll School HVAC system, which we disposed of then on October five. So we, there's no motion under Article sixteen, and we move to Article seventeen. The main motion under Article seventeen is on page seventeen dash five. Moved by Mr. Friedman, seconded by Mr. Green. Please make the usual amendment to the beginning of the motion. Should read voted that the town adopt the following resolution, resolution relating to townwide composting program, and I call on Mr. Shea. Mr. Shea is not on board, unfortunately, so I call on Mr. Friedman. Okay. He's in Precinct Five, but he's a non-Town Meeting Member. All right, Mr. Shea, you can unmute and start your presentation.
You offer this opportunity to introduce Warren Article seventeen. Article seventeen is a resolution that-
Excuse me, can we have your name and address, please?
Oh, sure. My name is Paul Shea. I live on one fifteen Walnut Street. That's in Precinct Five. And I introduced this article with my next-door neighbor, Doug Plant. So the Article seventeen urges a solid waste advisory committee, and by extension, the Department of Public Works, to find opportunities to expand the current recycling program to include all compostable organic waste. I'd like to tell you a little bit about our trash. Brookline currently generates over eight thousand tons of trash every year. And I, I'm not sure, you may know this, but it certainly was a surprise to me. Currently, all of that gets sent to an incinerator and burnt. And pretty much what that means is, you know, eight thousand tons of trash generates also, you know, toxic waste that goes into a landfill. It also generates different types of particulate pollution, as well as eight thousand tons of carbon dioxide. There has been talk about introducing composting in order to reduce this. Its estimates say that if we introduce widespread composting, we could cut that eight thousand tons by thirty percent. You know, so we could take out, you know, twenty-five hundred tons out of the stream. And composting is old technology. It's something that people have been doing for millennia. And it's not more expensive than, than what we do in this generation. It's, and has no, sort of no real downside. In fact, the DPW came up with a zero-worth waste framework where they said, yeah, by about twenty twenty-seven, we will get there. We will do townwide composting. And I think that what the warrant article asks is, you know, I think that timetable can be advanced. It's not like we're waiting for anything, any new technologies or, or, or anything else. I mean, there are towns and communities that already do this. And so, you know, what we're urging is that, you know, the town, you know, initially with SWAC, look into ways in which that timeline can be moved forward. Because I think this would be something very significant. This is something that, that, that others have done before, that we can do, and that, and that it will, it will make a real big difference, both in terms of waste management, as well as in terms of the climate, that we as a community can do something very concrete, very real. And I think, you know, it's, it's, the thing about composting is, on the one hand, it's not hard, you know, it's quote easy because there is nothing new. You're still just carting things away. It's just you're putting them into a compost pile instead of into an incinerator. But on the other hand, it's, okay, it's also hard because it's, because all of these things are hard. And so it's, you know, it's a little daunting, but I think it's something that we should try to pursue. I'm happy to say that I've been told that, you know, this article has the support of DPW and SWAC and the Advisory Committee- this article has the support of DPW and SWAC and the Advisory Committee, the Select Board, the Green Caucus PACs and Climate Action Brookline. But I think, I really hope that Town Meeting will take this opportunity to support this in order to tell the world and tell, you know, staff and tell everyone that, you know, we, we want to take action. We, and this is real action that we can take, and, and, and to send the message that we aren't afraid to just go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Harry Friedman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Harry Friedman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 12, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee in favor of the motion offered under warrant Article 17. The petitioners properly note the advantages of composting organic waste. In fact, I remember attending Capitol Subcommittee hearings on DPW's budget five or six years ago, where former Commissioner Andy Papasturgin noted that after recycling, composting would be the next big area the sanitation division would face. Under current Commissioner Erin Gallantyne, the town has addressed this issue. In the recently released draft of the town's Zero Waste Framework, it is noted that the DPW, in conjunction with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, has both long and short-term goals regarding composting. In the immediate term, the town has entered into an arrangement with Black Earth Compost for weekly organics collection at $2.31 per household per week in order to have their compost picked up. In addition, a pilot program has commenced with three elementary schools and the high school to implement compost collection. The DPW supports expanding the school program to all schools, and in the long term, to all customers on-town service. The advisory motion seeks to put the imprimatur of Town Meeting on the importance of advancing composting, while being cognizant of the personnel and financial considerations facing DPW, which make advancing its schedule not currently possible. By a vote of 22 to 0 to 1, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action under the motion offered under warrant Article 17. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you. Bernard Green for the Select Board has voted unanimously in support of the motion offered by the Advisor Committee. I think the main body of this warrant article is already been explained by previous speakers, but I want to just say that the Board agrees that composting is a very important solid waste strategy. But they heard strong statements from the Commissioner of Public Works on the, with respect to the strain of this so-called unfunded mandate would place on her operations. Therefore, you may notice that the Advisory Committee motion that's in your pocket differs from the original warrant article in terms of reducing the prescriptive aspect of that original article. So a unanimous Select Board voted favorable action on the motion offered by the Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Priestley.
Hi, Viden Priestley, Precinct 4. So I heard that you said that there was a charge for doing this, the Black Earth composting. How would that go about, like, if you wanted to add composting to condominiums? For like, you know, what the majority of Brookline lives in?
Mr. Friedman.
I'm not a complete expert on this, but I know in the condominiums near me, some of the individual condominium owners have contracted with Black Earth. They pay $2.31 a week. Other condominiums have gotten one bucket, and it's shared by the different people in the condominium. This can be done in small condominiums. I do not know what Black Earth's policy is regarding the larger condominiums.
Thank you, Ms. Pelkey.
Hello, yeah, I'm Lynda Olson Pelkey, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 2. And I just wanted to make a comment generally about our trash service, and especially the exciting potential of doing composting. And I've made this comment many times, and no one seems to understand what I'm talking about. But I'll try it again. I feel a little bit like John Van Skoyek with his crusade on letting the staff do their work. So I live in a 50-unit building. And we had to change our service a while ago. I'm a trustee, and I called around. And what I found out is that each unit in a condominium is charged $200 per unit, the same as a house would be, to get our trash picked up on-town service. So you get a lot of great Bennys if you're on-town service. You get the pink bags. You get the large items that can be taken away by just calling someone up. And you get all of your, you know, toders taken in the same way. But for small, for a building like mine, each multifamily unit generates very little trash. So the quantity of our trash is much less than it would be if we were all really households. Not to mention, you pick up 50 units worth of trash in, in one location rather than driving around. And yet, and yet, we are charged this exorbitant amount, which if you simply call up other trash haulers, will be much, much less expensive. So therefore, buildings like mine, we are all compelled to hire private haulers because it saves us money. And yet, we have all of these different operators running around town with really long routes, and it's just really not fair. So when I hear from our DPW that half of the households in Brookline are on-town service, that leaves the entire other half. Now, I understand-
One minute.
Thank you. I understand it's a problem if your building has dumpsters. But that's not our case. And I don't think it's a case very much for anybody. So I would love, love, love to have us figure out a reasonable price that we can participate in town trash service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Clint Richmond, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6. I would also like to mention that among the many organizations that are supporting this warrant article, the Brookline Greenspace Alliance is also, which I'm on the Board. I want to thank Town Meeting Member Friedman for mentioning the Black Earth program, which while it is oriented toward single-family homes, is available, you know, at, at the rates that Ms. Pelkey mentioned. But it's very important for everyone in town to, if they can, to sign up for the program that's offered through Black Earth, which is a negotiated rate through DPW. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Electress.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Kristi Electress, Precinct 7. I just wanted to make a comment. First of all, I'm thankful for this warrant article being brought forward, just to remind us to bring this town-wide composting as soon as possible. But one thing that came to my attention recently is, and it was on the list earlier this fall, is the increased rodent problem around town. This came to my attention because some of the schools are seeing rodents burrowing around. And it's very important that we address it as a town and holistically. And doing some research, I did see that some communities like Cambridge are addressing this in part by collecting compostables, which create a food source for the rodents and the rats. And so I guess it's a bit of a question, if someone can answer it, if there's a cost to addressing the rodent problem as a town on public properties and our public ways, you know, could that be considered holistically in trying to accelerate our path forward? Because that is an issue, more people are staying home, leaving more tasty things for the rats. And also, you know, the restaurants as well. I don't know, it's a question as well, whether composting, compostable collections would include town businesses and restaurants, which would create another source of food. Thank you.
Ms. Gallantyne on?
Good evening, Erin Gallantyne, Commissioner of Public Works. Can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Okay. So I think that this is something, it's a great question, really, that we would be exploring in terms of what an expanded composting program would look like for Brookline. In terms of rats, this is something that the Health and Human Services Department takes the lead on, but there is a multi-department task force that works together to try to address this problem. It's not a new issue for Brookline, but we have certainly seen a migration and a change in patterns with COVID-19, as you mentioned, in terms of there were sort of less restaurant activity, more activity at home. So that's something that our inspectors have actually really been trying to ramp up in terms of how waste is stored on properties. And I think that will be incredibly important as we think about not just regular trash, but composting, which would, how that is stored and disposed of will be incredibly important. So something we'll be looking at with this report.
Thank you, Ms. Frauley. You have to unmute yourself, Ms. Frauley. I know that's- Go ahead and speak, Ms. Frauley.
Yes, I have some questions.
Well, who are you? Now, Regina, you know better than that.
Now living in multi-unit dwellings, primarily large condo or apartments. So the burden for this is going to fall very heavily on single-family homeowners, as does the water meter fees, because we have more of them individually, and the-
Well, you're phasing in and out, Ms. Frauley.
That said, the question is, is there going to be allowance or conversation about exempting people for different reasons, such as age, infirmity, et cetera? That is the question.
Okay, Mr. Friedman, do you know the answer to that?
Mr. Moderator, either my internet connection or Ms. Frauley's internet connection is crapping out. I only heard part of the question. But the part that I heard calls for exemptions. And as someone who was, I believe, instrumental in getting exemptions when we went to toders for trash on-town service, I'm sure the DPW would be more than amenable to considering something. But I leave that to Ms. Gallantyne, the Commissioner. She might be a better source.
Ms. Gallantyne? Go ahead.
Erin Gallantyne, Commissioner of Public Works. So, Ms. Frauley, that is absolutely something that we will look into. It's honestly early in the process. Right now, our focus has been on trying to promote Black Earth and getting as many folks as possible to opt in. We're looking to change behaviors, which we think will help us overall implement a program town-wide in the future and focusing on the schools. So my answer is, we absolutely will, will look at that. But we're, we're not there yet, and it'll be part of our analysis.
Thank you. I have no more people lined up to comment or ask questions. And so we move to the main motion, the resolution on page 17-5. A yes vote will pass this resolution, a no vote will not. So we're ready for a vote. The voting period has commenced. Time's up. 200, motion carries by a vote of 208 in favor, three opposed, and four abstentions. Article 18, the main motion under Article 18 is on page 18-5. Over to the top of page 18-6. It's a motion recognizing the climate emergency that exists, moved by Mr. Crepchen and seconded by Mr. Sandman. Mr. Crepchen, you have four minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Ira Crepchen, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 15, and petitioner on warrant Article 18. Can I have the slides teed up? Thank you. So as we just heard, warrant Article 18 involves low-carbon concrete. Next slide, please. And it's in the form of a resolution, which calls for the town to reduce the town's carbon footprint by using low-carbon concrete wherever feasible in municipal projects, and encouraging private developers operating in the town to do the same. And to be clear, we're talking about anywhere concrete is used, sidewalks, streets, and buildings. Next slide, please. And some terminology is important to understand why we're doing this. There's two classes of carbon emissions that people talk about. There's operational carbon, which includes greenhouse gas emissions from operating equipment and systems like lighting, heat pumps, and motors, and so on. And then there's what's called embodied carbon, which is where concrete comes in. And basically, that involves the greenhouse gases that come from mining, manufacturing, transportation, and eventually disposable or recycling of materials that are used in various projects. Next slide, please. So the time value of embodied carbon is very important. When a building is constructed before it starts operating and is already responsible for tons of greenhouse gas emissions, and even though the majority of embodied emissions happen once when the building is constructed, and operating emissions happen over time and are cumulative, the majority of greenhouse emissions for the first 15 to 20 years of a building's life will be the embodied emissions from materials and construction. So it's very important, especially given the urgency of climate change, to get this right in the beginning. Next slide, please. So why concrete in particular? Concrete is actually the most-used substance in the world after water. Billions of tons per year are created worldwide. And for each ton created, there's roughly one ton of greenhouse gas emissions emitted. And that's equivalent to roughly burning 1,000 pounds of coal. So it's a huge, huge issue. And the new infrastructure plan that's being put into place in this country is just going to increase the demand for concrete. Next slide. And it's important also to understand where the carbon comes from that's associated with concrete. And basically, one of the major elements in mixing concrete is the cement. And the cement is heated to high temperature by burning fossil fuels. And there's also a chemical reaction that occurs that directly releases CO2. The good news is that this carbon can be reduced at little or no cost premium today. Next slide, please. And it's done basically by replacing a portion of the cement with other binder materials. And that, that's something that's been available for a long time, just not been requested by enough customers to make it main- And that, that's something that's been available for a long time, just not been requested by enough customers to make it mainstream. But there's also emerging technologies that promise to be even more effective at, at reducing carbon in concrete. And in fact, offer the potential at some point in the future to actually make concrete a sink for carbon rather than a source. Next slide, please.
Give one minute.
And to give some examples that are nearby showing you that this can be done, there, the new high school in Arlington, Massachusetts has six different concrete mixes and cut concrete, carbon concrete content by thirty percent. And the Boston University Center for Data Sciences, which you can see from Star Drive, has cut concrete, carbon concrete content by about twelve percent. Next slide, please. And the benefits go beyond just helping Brookline reduce its carbon footprint, important as that is. It also will hopefully spread the word to spur the industry to use more low-carbon concrete and continue to develop these, to develop these new technologies. Next slide, please. So we've got a lot of support. Pardon?
I hope this is your last one because you run out of time.
Okay, this is the last slide. We've gotten a lot of support so far from various town agencies. And most important, I want to give kudos to the DPW for starting a pilot project where they're comparing low-carbon concrete with sixteen percent less cementation materials to their standard mix. And if you walk by Town Hall, you'll see the installation and hopefully you'll appreciate it. So please join me in supporting Warren Article eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Hey, Mr. Green.
I'm speaking now. I thought Mr. Cole was speaking.
Go ahead.
Okay. So Bernard Green, Select Board Member for unanimous Select Board, recommending favorable action on Warren Article eighteen. This Warren Article was submitted by petition seeking approval of a non-binding resolution encouraging the town to use concrete produced with less carbon dioxide emissions than conventionally produced concrete. As the previous speaker indicated, our Department of Public Works is enthusiastically in support of this and actually has a example of low-carbon concrete near Town Hall that people can go by and look at and draw some conclusions from that. And the Commissioner is also eager to experiment with low-carbon concrete in other contexts to determine its adequacy in municipal settings. And, and that's important because as, you know, concrete has to be not only low-carbon, it has to be effective and not create carbon or other problems inadvertently because it's inappropriate. It's also the case that recycling of existing, existing concrete is a current practice of the town. So that's, that's a good fact to remember that, or to know that we currently do deal with the proper disposal of concrete here in town. So as a result, the Select Board voted unanimously, as I said, to recommend favorable action on the revised motion offered by the petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Ira. I want to remind everyone why we need to focus on buildings. Oh, I'm sorry. Lisa Cunningham, Town Meeting Member, Precinct fifteen. I want to remind everyone why we need to focus on buildings. Buildings account for forty percent of our global carbon emissions, but in Brookline, they represent over two-thirds of our emissions. And in neighboring cities like Boston and Cambridge, over eighty percent carbon emissions. RMI recently released a report which lays out the framework for reducing the carbon emissions associated with building materials, most specifically from concrete, steel, and rebar, and insulation by nearly half at a cost premium of less than one percent. The report is based on reports of buildings already constructed by Stanzka, the same contractor who's building the building, the Brookline High School. So as Ira pointed out, this practice has already taken place. How we make things has a significant impact on climate change. We already know that we don't need to use fossil fuels, and then we have to decarbonize as fast as possible. We know that gas appliances are not only accelerating our climate crisis, but producing extremely unhealthy air quality. Having a gas appliance in your home or your place of work means that you have your own personal gas leak. We know we need to electrify everything, but we need to do much more. To get to zero emissions by 2040 and a corresponding fifty-seven percent reduction by 2030, we have to eliminate carbon emissions. Every single new building built in Brookline needs to be net zero or net positive, meaning generating more electricity than it consumes. We need to build highly efficient building envelopes and include solar and storage from the get-go. We still need to be added to the Rascal's school. We need to continue to use ground-source heat pumps when possible and link these systems into other town buildings when we can. We must reduce embodied carbon, not just in concrete, but in other major emitters such as steel and rebar, insulation, glazing, and finished materials. And lastly, I'm, I'm just wrapping up. And lastly, we must start replacing our fossil fuel systems in every building, following Ithaca's example, and installing solar panels on every single rooftop and over every single parking lot. I want to thank my fellow Precinct fifteen member, Ira Crepchen, for bringing this Warren Article to Town Meeting. Please vote favorable action on Warren Article eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Lowey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Warner Lowey, Town Meeting Member, Precinct thirteen. I'm a member of Climate Action Brookline and the Select Board's Climate Action Committee. Brookline Town Meeting has a twenty-year history of taking the lead on climate change mitigation. But I think this is one of the best Warren Articles yet. It's very simple and powerful. The proponent deserves a lot of credit for putting it in front of us. But what it also does is remind all of us that there are things we can do to bring about systemic change. Of course, to do that, we have to keep our eyes open. We have to keep our minds open, to look for new opportunities. This Warren Article is about a new opportunity. There wasn't any such thing as low-carbon concrete a few years ago. But what I hope, in addition, I'm sure we will pass this Warren Article, I hope that it will also motivate all of us to look for new opportunities. The climate change movement needs new people. It needs new ideas. So please vote yes.
I have no more speakers. On the motion on page eighteen-five, over the middle of page eighteen-six, a vote in favor is, a vote in favor of the resolution, opposed. And we will now proceed to a vote. Voting period has commenced. Time, may I have the vote, please? Motion carries by a vote of two hundred and sixteen in favor, zero opposed, and three abstentions. Article nineteen, the main motion under Article nineteen and only motion is on page nineteen-seven over to page nineteen-twelve. It's an amendment of the town's nuisance control bylaw. And there's one, one edit, and that is at the top of page nine-thirteen. Please strike the words or act on anything relative there, too. This is moved by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Gordon. Mr. Davis, you have four minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Jonathan Davis, Town Meeting Member, Precinct ten. Article nineteen, as amended, would amend the existing nuisance control bylaw. That's section eight-point-two-nine of the town's general bylaws. The existing nuisance control bylaw was enacted in 2010. It's a tool that the police have learned how to use over the past eleven years. It's a tool that the police can use to de-escalate situations by allowing the police to impose modest civil fines rather than beginning a criminal process. The tool, the existing, the nuisance control bylaw, also allows the police to impose modest civil fines on the owners of properties where the public nuisance occurs to prompt the owners in the future to be in better control of their property so that public nuisances don't occur in the future, prevention being better than even the de-escalation. Also, the nuisance control bylaw allows the police to issue a warning rather than a fine if the nuisance occurs before ten PM, and if the nuisance is the first nuisance within a year. Article nineteen is proactive. It would give the police an updated tool. The existing nuisance control bylaw defines public nuisance as follows. Public nuisance means a gathering of persons on any premises. Premises is emphasized here. It's important. In a matter which constitutes a violation of law or creates a substantial disturbance of the quiet enjoyment of property or public, of private or public property in a neighborhood. And that includes, but is not limited to excessive noise, obstruction of public ways, disturbance of the peace, and some others. The heart of the nuisance control bylaw is the definition of premises. This is the, this is the definition. Premises means any residence or other private property, place or location, including any commercial or business property. Property here actually means real estate. Exists, the existing bylaw already reaches commercial and business property, whether indoor or outdoor, so long as it is located on privately-owned real estate. In the past year, the town has been licensing portions of its sidewalks and curbsides to businesses. These licensed areas are not private property. They are public way. They are owned by the town. As a result, the existing nuisance control bylaw cannot be applied by the police if a public nuisance occurs on those parts of the public way that the town has licensed to businesses. Amended Article nineteen would extend the existing nuisance control bylaw to portions of the public way that the town permits businesses to occupy. Remember that, that the nuisance control, control bylaw is de-escalatory, allowing the.
One minute, sir.
Thank you. It is also preventive. Article nineteen doesn't impose an additional level of regulation. It doesn't require bureaucratic reports or inspections. The nuisance control bylaw is complaint-driven. It isn't administered by the police going around looking for public nuisances. If there are complaints, these would be coming from the businesses' residential neighbors, who may on other occasions be the businesses' nearest and most likely patient, patrons. I think everyone wants the businesses to do well and come back strong. But with businesses expanding into the public way venues, there should be a balance between the right to quiet enjoyment of neighboring residents and the rights of businesses. Please vote favorable action on this proactive amended Article nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Scoyak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Van Scoyak from the Select Board. And thank you, Jonathan Davis, for bringing this article to the attention of the town. Article nineteen is a petitioned article which seeks to amend the bylaws to address a perceived gap in enforcement for disturbances on the sidewalk area or parking spaces when a business has been given a permit to use the space for outdoor dining or other permitted uses on the public way. The Select Board did not see that there was enough data to demonstrate that this was a significant problem that needed to be addressed, and also felt that the police have the jurisdiction that they need to ensure that disruptive gatherings can be dealt with. And so a unanimous Select Board voted no action on Article nineteen. And again, I want to go back to the beginning of what I said, which is thank you to Jonathan Davis. Everything, excuse me, every, everyone in town, I think, has had at least one experience with some kind of a noisy activity, either in their neighborhood or, you know, when they were visiting one of our commercial active areas. And, you know, we have wished for there to be a perfect world in which you could dial nine-one-one, police could show up, the noise would still be going on. Often, the problem is that it isn't. And, you know, there's, you know, a ticket to be written or some other warning to be issued to the offending parties. This article posits that we somehow now have a crisis of nobody knows what to do about noisy disturbances that happen on sidewalks that happen to be part of the extension of businesses into sidewalk dining areas. I take it his, at face value, you know, Mr. Davis's contention that, you know, the, the, the police chief is sort of interested in getting this extra enforcement clarity. We haven't really been made aware of any situation in which he's asked the Select Board for this enforcement clarity. And I think we need more substantial evidence that we actually have a problem here before we're going to recommend favorably on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Neil Gordon, Precinct one, Town Meeting Member, speaking for the Advisory Committee. Article nineteen closes loophole in Article bylaw eight-point-twenty-nine, nuisance control. That loophole created when the town allowed outdoor dining on property owned by the town. The current bylaw was voted by Town Meeting in 2010 and provides that property owners can be held accountable for disturbances on their properties. Enforcement tends to be complaint-driven, initiated, for example, by a neighbor. Outdoor dining on private property is subject to the current bylaw. Outdoor dining on equivalent town-owned property is not, hence the loophole. Closing the loophole expands a de-escalation tool, which is apparently operating effectively. As Mr. Davis said, using relatively modest civil penalties against owners rather than criminal actions against individuals. It sends a message to businesses that we expect them to be responsible for their venues, regardless of the space, of the space they occupy. The Advisory Committee is aware of zero complaints regarding our now eleven-year-old bylaw, its effectiveness or means of enforcement by the police. To be clear, I'm talking about the bylaw and not about complaints of bad behavior. By a vote of fourteen to six with two abstentions, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on the petitioner's Article nineteen motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Sorry, unmute. Am I audible?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, further, my name is Ryan Black, the Town Meeting Member, Precinct six. In my opinion, further additional discretionary enforcement powers to the police provides a dangerous means for selective enforcement. There are equity concerns over who's most likely to invoke, involve the police in a nuisance complaint and who's most likely to be targeted by these complaints and who the police might decide to vigorously pursue action against. The, the need for further police powers does not seem justified at this time, especially considering the lack of complaints. Thank you. I'll, I'll be quick. I'll wrap there.
Thank you, Mr. Margolis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Margolis, Precinct seven. What's the harm if this is passed? As it is now, if you happen to live near a restaurant establishment that has a space on the sidewalk and the. establishment that has a space on the sidewalk and the the group, the, the crowd gets too noisy and you call the police, the police have a choice between issuing a criminal complaint if they think that they can do that, or doing nothing. And you're stuck with the noise. Now, Mr. Black just urged a, a concern about who the police would target. The police will target people about whom there has been a complaint. Now, if there's a complaint, they can issue a criminal citation. What's the harm if they can issue a, a civil citation that involves a small penalty or even a warning? I don't understand why the Select Board opposes this idea. It seems to me it's a do-no-harm amendment. It's prophylactic. It can prevent problems in the future. Frankly, I think this is a no-brainer.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Yes, hello.
Yep, there we go.
Chuck Schwartz, Precinct nine. Much of what I was going to say has already been said by Mr. Davis and Mr. Gordon. But I'll say a few more things. The pandemic, as we know, has really created havoc with our lives. It's really caused changes, one of which is to have a ten-town meeting remotely. But restaurants have come to depend on outdoor dining, which is a nice alternative to having to go inside during this time. And as has been said, the unintended consequences of this is sometimes there's noise in public spaces and sometimes there are disturbances. In my neighborhood in Coolidge Corner, there's a restaurant that I won't name on the corner of Beacon Street, which has seating on the sidewalk and in back of the restaurant in an area that is a part of a town parking lot. Several constituents of mine contacted me in early August, being concerned about the noise that was coming from this restaurant, particularly the back patio. I, at the time, called the, someone in the licensing department to ask what could be done about this. And the response was that, well, the police could talk to the owner, but there really wasn't that much that could be done. Perhaps this could be brought up when the license for that restaurant came up for renewal. And then this would be taken under consideration. It seems to me that this amendment, Article nineteen, would give the town the tools needed to to take care of these disturbances. And I think it's something that would create a more quiet environment in our neighborhoods. And I would urge people to vote for favorable action on Article nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ananian.
Hello, Scott Ananian, Town Meeting Member, Precinct ten. And I, oops, can you hear me all right? There's a confusing message, but I would like to support the, the Select Board position on this article. This article seems to target additional liability on open-air dining when our restaurants are still struggling due to the pandemic. We are entering the difficult colder months and our news is warning of a steep uptick of COVID again. We still need to be supporting our restaurants and their experiments in outdoor dining again, which are allowing them to eke out survival in this fragile time. This Warren Article is unnecessary and premature. This is not the time to crack down on a promising program that has barely gotten established. Our restaurants, we're still trying to figure out the, the right price and the right price, which is affordable to the restaurants and will allow them to continue. I can just look down the street and, and, and count on my fingers how many, how many restaurants have closed in the past two years. I think this, this article is punitive. I, it will be applied inequitably to people who, who, who know about it and who calling complaints. We've seen what that sort of, of reporting tends to do in the past in, in targeting enforcement inequitably. I would urge no action. There's plenty of time. If the police chief comes to our Select Board, the police commissioners, and actually expresses the opinion that there is a problem here, there is plenty of time to address this in the future. Hopefully, once COVID is passed and this program is established, this is not the time to do it now. I urge you to vote no action. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion to call the question, which I think I'll entertain, I'll allow. Is there a second? Motion has been seconded. I have Ms. Weaver, Ms. Brown, Ms. Schweitzer, and Bruce Levin, a non-Town Meeting Member. And Janice Khan signed up to speak, and I'm not sure on what, which side of the issue, but there they are. So if you vote to terminate debate, those, you will not hear from them. If you vote to keep on going, I'll call on them. We're ready for a vote. Takes two-thirds vote. Voting period is over. That motion carries by a two-thirds vote. One hundred fifty in favor, fifty-seven opposed, and eleven abstentions. On the motion, we'll now vote on the motion on page nineteen-seven over to page nineteen-eight. This is an amendment of the bylaw and a vote, affirmative vote will amend the bylaw and the negative vote will leave the bylaw as is. We're ready for a vote. Voting period is over. May I have the vote, please? Motion is defeated by a vote of ninety-three in favor, one hundred and twenty opposed, and nine abstentions. It's almost ten-thirty. The next article will take a considerable amount of discussion and I will entertain a motion to adjourn the town meeting until seven P M. on November thirty. Motion is made. Is it seconded? It's been seconded. I think we're ready for a vote on the adjournment. Are you ready for a vote on the adjournment? Okay, the voting period has commenced. Time is up. Motion to adjourn carries by a vote of two hundred one in favor, eleven opposed, and five abstentions. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. The town meeting is hereby adjourned to seven P M. on Tuesday, November thirty. Happy Thanksgiving.